Good afternoon and welcome to the February 25th Policy Meeting of the Phoenix City Council. I will now call the meeting to order. We're beginning with a very special treat today, one that we don't always have. We have Cub Scout PAC 6 from Den 2 here with us to do the Pledge of Allegiance. These scouts joining us today have just completed their Arrow of Light rank in Cub Scouts, the highest and most involved level. Each of them has learned and modeled the values of the Scout Law and Oath over the years, which shapes them into our future leaders. They are challenged to be, and feel free to help me with this part, trustworthy, loyal, full, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Wow. That was a very impressive. And equally impressive, Councilman Robinson knew the words. We are so thankful that they care enough to ask them questions about how they can be more impactful on our world, make it more beautiful, just and sustainable, and that they act on that oath every single day. And now I would invite them to come forward to help us start the formal meeting. After they help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, they're gonna come back behind and say hello to the City Council. All right. All right, Connor, the floor is yours.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts attention. Scouts salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful job. Well, thank you to our scouts for leading us in a very powerful rendition of the pledge and congratulations on your recent achievements. We'll now go to roll call. Councilwoman Galindo Elvira.
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
And now we'll begin with council information and presentations. We'll begin with Councilwoman Stark, if we could bring up her PowerPoint.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, just a couple comments. More than anything, I want to recognize you for being recognized by C-N-W-B-C as a changemaker of the year. And I know that's largely because of all the work you did in moving the semiconductor facility to our great city. As a matter of fact, Vice Mayor O'Brien and I did the Phoenix Police Foundation Island Walk on Sunday, and they were there in full force. They were running the course. And it was great to see them and see them be a part of our community, and a large part of that is due to you, so congratulations on your award. And that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated. Shall we go next to Councilwoman Guardado?
Thank you, Mayor. Can't believe spring training is upon us. My first report at El Oso Park. Yesterday, I had the honor to be at the ribbon cutting of the reopening of the baseball fields at El Oso Park as a mom of two young boys and as a mom that participated in the Catis Youth Baseball League for over three years. It was great. It was full circle for me yesterday to see how my son played in these fields maybe 10 years ago and now to see these fields being renovated by the Diamondbacks Foundation. It's incredible to see all those kids out there, ready to play baseball, just continue to work on the equity issues in West Phoenix. And for these kids to see that they can also have the same type of fields on the west side as they do on the east side of Phoenix, I think it's incredible just to think about all of the kids that will someday be professional baseball players and all the great things that they will be able to accomplish. I want to thank the Toledo family, the Diamondbacks Foundation, our Parks Director Cynthia Aguilar, and everyone else in the Parks and Recs Department for all of their hard work on this item. Secondly, we had our Maryville Mercado kickoff on 3/29, and I would like to report about, wanted to share that it was a huge success. It was our first one for the year, and it was at the Maryville Community Center this past Saturday, and I would like to invite all of you to our next Maryville Mercado taking place on March 29th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Maryville Community Center. Come and explore local businesses, celebrate culture, and enjoy life and entertainment in the heart of Maryville. And third one that we've been looking forward to, at least people in District 5 constituents have been looking forward to the grand opening of the Canal Scape. It's also gonna be happening on March 29th. The celebration will be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., celebrating the completion of another four miles of outdoor amenities to the Canal Scape. Public parking will be located at Maryville High School on 59th Avenue and Indian School, where you can enjoy light bites before a ceremonial walk along the canal to our celebration and ribbon cutting on 63rd Avenue in Clarendon. And a program that we've been talking about for a very long time and has been very successful, our gated alley program. The 1,000th Alley has been gated or will be gated this year, and I am delighted to announce that we will be celebrating the 1,000 gated alley on Saturday, March 22nd at 9:00 a.m. on 59th Avenue and Coolidge Street. This is an exciting and important milestone for this project, and we are excited to celebrate this in District 5. The gated alley program has been a pivotal program to help deter crime and blight in neighborhoods all over Phoenix, and we are excited to celebrate this success. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. We'll go to Councilwoman Galindo Elvira next.
Thank you, Mayor. First slide, please. Late last month, the District 7 community welcomed Fire Station 62. It's a state-of-the-art facility designed to enhance emergency services and response times in the growing southwest Phoenix area. The station was built with the health and well-being of firefighters and paramedics in mind, incorporating features to reduce hazardous exposure and prevent cancer. Its addition strengthens public safety and demonstrates a continued commitment to protecting both first responders and residents. Next slide, please. Thank you to everyone who volunteered and assisted with the point in time count. The critical data collected plays a vital role in shaping effective strategies and ensuring that individuals experiencing homelessness receive the support and resources they need. A special thanks to Sarah McCann from OHS, the Office of Homeless Solutions, for guiding me through the process. Thanks to the dedication of Valley Metro, Marcus Coleman, and his team, South Phoenix will finally be connected to downtown by light rail, providing residents with improved access to jobs, education, and opportunities across the valley. I'm sorry, I forgot to say next slide. There you go. Now we can go to next slide. Councilwoman Hodge Washington and I kicked off the month by teaming up for a float in the Levine Community Parade. Huge thanks to Jeff Sprout and the Levine Lions Club for putting together such a great event and bringing the community together. Next slide. Couple of weeks ago, I had the honor of joining fellow council members to kick off Black History Month. As this month comes to an end, just remember, black history is Phoenix history, black history is Arizona history, and we don't have to wait for one month to celebrate it. It's something that can be celebrated 3/65/24. Next slide. Heads up for anyone who uses the Central Bridge, construction is underway for the next 12 weeks, reducing traffic to just one lane. To avoid delays, consider using the 7th Street and 7th Avenue Bridges as an alternate route. I assure you, it is worth the construction time, and I'm sorry that there will be some inconvenience to this, but it will be such a beautiful feature, light feature, when it is installed, and it will certainly be an icon for South Phoenix. Next slide, please. This Thursday, Friendly House will be offering immigration legal services at Burton Bar Library, which is in District 7, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. Additional sessions will also be held on March 27th and April 24th. Next slide. Huge thanks to the Levine Community Council for an amazing barbecue. It is legend, Gary. I took third place in the cow milking competition, though I'm pretty sure that I would have gotten first if there had not been a ringer in the mix. And I also want to extend my congratulations to Congresswoman Yasmeen Ansari, who is defending her title. I kinda beat her, but she pledged to return, to regain her title, and so I wish her well. Come out next Saturday, March 8th, and celebrate the South Central Extension Downtown Hub Light Rail Line. There will be food and other giveaway. It will be the first time that the light rail train will reach baseline in Central, which is just an amazing opportunity to witness it and really signaling that we are so close to having light rail going up and down South Phoenix. Next slide. To stay connected to what's happening around the city and to get more involved, check out phoenix.gov. As always, if you live in District 7 and want to contact me, it's easy. You can reach out through any of the options on the screen. I'm here to serve you and greatly value your input. A word about constituent services. We are here to help and to assist District 7 residents, but please know that any request for assistance meant to dehumanize the unhoused or to reduce the dignity of any person is dead on arrival. I will not be a party to that, and it does not merit a response. We're here to serve the good, working families of District 7, but we are not here to create harm or danger or to discriminate others. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go next to Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. While we wait on our PowerPoint, a little birdie told me that today is our Water Director's birthday. Happy birthday, Troy.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been many activities and events going on since our last policy meeting, but I wanted to highlight a few. Next slide, please. To kick off Black History Month, I had the incredible time partnering with Hike with a firefighter, where I joined local residents and had the opportunity to learn more about fire safety, as well as the vital work done by our firefighters to keep our communities safe. It was fun, informative, a great way to connect with our heroes while enjoying the great outdoors. As Councilwoman Galindo said, we had a blast at the Levine Parade, where we celebrated with the community, enjoyed the vibrant floats, and cheered on the local participants. It was a great opportunity to come together, honor our neighborhood, and share in the excitement of such a joyous and spirited event. Next slide, please. Also had the rewarding experience of attending the Junior Achievement 3D E kickoff, where I was inspired by the passion and the entrepreneurial spirit of the young participant and enjoyed engaging with the future leaders of the community. I also had a great time at the Broadway House Apartment Celebration, where I joined the community in vibrant festivities, live entertainment, and connecting with residents in a joyful atmosphere. I would like to thank their board for the invitation and congratulate Pastor Warren Stewart, Sr. on a job well done serving in this role. Next slide. I also proudly attended the unveiling of the Devin Booker Court, where I celebrated the impact of sports in the community and applauded the NBA star's dedication to inspiring local youth through his commitment to giving back. I would like to give a special thank you to Chicano's Por la Casa and our City of Phoenix Parks Department for their tireless efforts to make this event a success. I also had the privilege of attending the NFBPBA and the Phoenix Hispanic Network Afro-Latina Event, where we celebrated the incredible achievement and the resilience of the Afro-Latino community. It was an inspired opportunity to engage in meaningful conversation about diversity, inclusion, and how we can continue to uplift and empower underrepresented communities. Next slide, please. I was also honored to be featured in the Arizona Museum of Black History exhibit called Notable Women in Arizona Black History, where they are highlighting women trailblazers throughout the state. I encourage everyone to go visit the West Atrium in the Convention Center to learn more about this museum and more about the amazing people. I want to say thank you to Mr. Fred Warren, as well as Jerry and the Convention Center for allowing them to put together an exhibit that was educational and meaningful. Next slide. On February 22nd, I got to celebrate Monsurri Festival, where I got to experience the vibrant culture, traditions, and music of the Japanese community. It was a beautiful celebration of diversity, and I really enjoyed connecting with so many people while enjoying the lively atmosphere and delicious food. We also had a great time over at East Lake Park's Jazz Festival, where we connected with the community and celebrated the rich cultural heritage that makes our community so special. It was a day full of great music, great people, and unforgettable memories. Thank you to the East Lake Park Neighborhood Association for hosting an amazing event. And last but not least, I had a fantastic time at the Central City Palooza, where I got to connect with residents, also enjoy great local food and activities, and connected with many resource vendors. It was a great reminder of the strength and unity that helps make Central City thrive. Next slide, please. Clearly, there was a lot going on. Levine BBQ, as mentioned, was a day we always look forward to each year. We had a great time tabling and talking to our constituents. The weather cooperated and provided a great backdrop. I did not participate in the milking competition. I thought it was fair to give others a chance to participate. I want to thank the Levine Community Council and all of the other partners for putting together such a great community event. Next slide, please. We are looking forward to our next coffee with Keisha in partnership with the Perry Park Neighborhood Association on Friday, February 28th. The event starts at 10:00 a.m. and will take place at the Salud El Balance Community Center. I hope to see you all there. Next slide. As always, if you need help with city services or notice an issue in your community, please don't hesitate to reach out to our office. That is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I will wait for the slides, or I'll start. Over the weekend, District 4 hosted a listening session for residents to express their concerns with reporting to Phoenix Cares. Residents got a brief overview of Phoenix Cares and all the departments involved in the process, the initiatives and the accomplishments of the Office of Homeless Solution, and were then given a platform to ask questions and tell their story. Thank you to all who attended. We had a very productive discussion focused on keeping our neighborhoods safe and connected. Next slide. Springtime is here, which means street fairs are here. This month, we attended the Willa and Coronado Street Fairs, connecting with residents from our historic neighborhoods and across District 4. Next slide. Suenio Park is now open with new features. I got to celebrate with community members Representative Cesar Aguilar and Senator Ana Hernandez, who have advocated for these updates for years. I would like to thank the students at Joseph Zito Elementary School for working on this and selecting the design of the playground, and it's their playground. I also like to thank Bodead for also their voice. We are continuing improvements on this park. Chill-drinking fountains and art are coming soon, and the kids at Joseph Zito will also be involved in the art feature installation. Next slide. It was truly an honor to celebrate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King alongside our community in downtown Phoenix. Martin Luther King Jr. changed the course of American history and dedicated his life to challenging the systems of segregation and oppression. His message reminds us that the fight for justice and equality is ongoing. Next slide. Carl Hayden staff, students, and neighbors are all gathered to celebrate a long-awaited reopening of Falcon Park. This project was very special and very exciting. Falcon Park has a long and rich history in our community. The property was purchased in 1956 for $28,000 with the vision of creating a public park. Fast forward to 2024, and these renovations have further elevated the park's offerings, including a brand-new accessible playground to provide fun for children of all ages, a newly renovated restroom, new and energy-efficient sports field lighting, new ADA-compliant walkways making the park more accessible to everyone regardless of mobility, and renovated sports courts and fields. And we are looking for exercise equipment in the future. Next slide. As you can see, here are the upcoming events in District 4. Melrose Street Fair, Midtown Sunday Off-Central Street Fair, and Cantal Palmcroft Home Tour and Street Fair. Looking forward to seeing you. For Cesar Chavez Day 2025, we are hosting a neighborhood cleanup on the west side near Morris K. Udall Middle School. We're looking for volunteers of all ages. Please scan the QR code to sign up. And please do not hesitate to reach out to my office if you have any questions, concerns, or suggestions. We are here to help you and serve you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any final comments? All right. We will go to our first item, general fund forecast and multi-year forecast. Want to welcome up our Budget and Research Director Amber and thank Amber, Jeff, and the whole, and our team for your expertise and creativity as we navigate a budget forecast that is significantly impacted by state action. The former governor's flat tax and the elimination of the residential rental tax have detrimental consequences to the tune of more than $90 million in fiscal year '25-'26 alone. As we'll see in the presentation, we face a more than $47 million hit to our general fund next fiscal year and even greater reductions in fiscal years '26 and '27. Beyond the hit to our general fund, we're seeing shortfalls to our public safety specialty funds, parks and preserves, and transportation 2050 funding. These funding reductions mean indirect impact to Phoenix residents. Unless a new revenue source is identified, this means slower fire and police response times, reduced homelessness services and affordable housing initiatives, and impacts to our library and park systems. On top of these drastic reductions, the state legislature is now considering additional legislation that would impact our city's funding, including public safety, diverting $200 million from the City of Phoenix to pay for renovations at Chase Field, a building we do not even own. These are dollars that fund our firefighters, who respond to medical emergencies, help police officers fight crime, and combat homelessness. I'm grateful to our local stakeholders who understand the gravity of these reductions and the importance of essential city services. Thank you for your support as we consider revenue replacement options. And I'll turn it to our city manager, Jeff Barton.
Mayor, members of the council, first and foremost, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak with you today. The multi-year forecast is a very critical part of our budget balancing process that we go through each and every single year. I would say this year is probably more important and more critical than ever, given some of the actions that you've already referenced, Mayor, as well as some of those that we'll be discussing a little bit more in detail. I wish I had better news, but as a result of the impact of the local economy, the impact of residential rental, the impact of the flat tax, as well as just the overall increase in inflationary pressures that we feel on our own budget, the city is faced with making some tough choices. Unlike the federal government, we are required to balance our budget. We cannot deficit spend, and for my 28 years at the city, I've never been in a position where there hasn't always been a demand for more services, not less. And so I think what we're faced with is trying to meet the needs of the council, to meet the needs of our residents and citizens, but we're operating within the confines of what our revenue generates. And so today, what Amber and I are gonna walk you through is a plan as to how we can balance the budget. Again, I know no one likes to talk about tax increases, but we're here today to talk about one of those options to help balance this budget is a potential TPT increase. And for the record, I think it's important to reference the fact that our 2.3% sales tax, the 1.2% of that rate, roughly 52% of that rate goes to the general fund, and it has not been increased since 1986, but yet our services have dramatically increased in that period of time. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Amber.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeff. Mayor, members of the council, and the public, pleased to be here today to present to you the preliminary '25-'26 general fund budget status and multi-year forecast. So today, I'm going to cover the forecast, discuss its purpose, provide an overview. I'll then give a brief economic update. I'll then go over the general fund revenue and expenditure assumptions and forecasts. I'll discuss the '25-'26 budget status for next year, as well as the baseline forecast results, and then I'll discuss the proposed strategies to balance the general fund budget going forward and talk about next steps for budget adoption. So council, as you're aware, we do the multi-year forecast because it is considered to be a financial best practice per the Governance Finance Officers Association. It does provide you with a framework for adopting a balanced budget as you're required to do every year. It helps to guide your decision-making as it pertains to city services. We do consult with economic experts, including Arizona State University, the University of Arizona through the Forecasting Project, as well as the state's Joint Legislative Budget Committee in constructing our forecast. So the general fund budget forecast is made up of two main components. Our resources, which is made up of city and state sales tax, our state shared revenues, department fees and charges, interest earnings, transfers and recoveries, and our fund balance. Our expenditures or our cost to provide programs and services is made up primarily of our employee costs for salaries and benefits, including pension, as well as contractuals, commodities, capital outlay, as well as budgeting our contingency amount every year in the event it were to be needed. So when we take our estimated resources, less our estimated costs, we arrive at an annual surplus or a deficit. Because the council's required to adopt a balanced budget, in years where we would have a surplus, the council could look to expand or add additional programs and services or possibly increase employee compensation. If there was a projected deficit, the council would need to make difficult decisions, including reducing programs and services or potentially increasing revenues where it's within your authority to do so. So in terms of the economy overall, particularly for Phoenix, Phoenix Metro, and the state, we have good news. It's low unemployment. We have a strong job market. People are entering back into the workforce since the pandemic. We have moderating inflation and continued wage growth. However, it does appear that is slowing. The U.S. economy is growing. According to the United States Bureau of Economic Analysis, real gross domestic product, which is a common measure of economic strength, grew last year at 2.8%, and it is estimated per the Conference Board to grow in 2025 by 2.3%. Arizona jobs are also doing better than the nation, outpacing it in terms of the job growth, 2.1% for Arizona compared to 1.6% in the U.S. This trend is expected to continue, however, to slow in 2025. That is per the university. That is per the University of Arizona's Economic Business Research Center. There are risks or headwinds to the broader economic outlook, including high consumer debt levels, high interest rates, low housing affordability, some market challenges with labor, significant national debt, geopolitical events, global supply chain disruptions. Just recently, a lot of uncertainty about tariffs, taxation, what effects those are going to have on the broader economy, it's not known. The new Trump administration, as well as Federal Reserve actions, also are causing a lot of uncertainty and market volatility. As I mentioned, inflation is moderating. I'm going to show a chart here momentarily, but we still have increased costs. We do not have deflation. Prices are also significantly higher today than they were three years ago. The Consumer Price Index West Region, per the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics, had CPI at 2.5% in December 2024. Other risks beyond the broader economic considerations are state legislation that can happen either in the current session or going forward that would continue to limit your local control, reduce city revenues, or increase our costs. We are following that very closely, as well as our government relations team. So general fund revenues, some of the broader or more important assumptions that are included in our baseline model, I'm going to go over those. I also want to point the council and the public to the city council report that's available online, has a lot of information about how we've constructed the model. But some of those basic assumptions, no future fee increases or decreases, and no new sources of revenue in the baseline model. Our annual revenue estimates are based on our trusted economic experts, including using our statistical econometric model built by the University of Arizona for estimating sales tax. We are not assuming or building any type of recession into the forecast. We are accounting for a slowdown in sales tax growth rates. That's because of year-to-date data, which we follow very closely, is indicating our revenue growth is slowing. So we have to make sure we're conservative in our forecasts and we don't get too aggressive. And we've built that in. We've accounted for the impacts from the recent legislative impacts of Senate Bill 1131, 1828, into the projections as well. That's eliminating the residential rental sales tax effective January and reducing the state shared individual income tax rate to the current flat tax. We have not assumed any further impacts into the model about any legislation that could further reduce either income tax, sales tax, or any other revenue stream that the city receives.
Amber, can we pause for a second? Councilwoman Pastor has a question.
Yes.
My question is on 19, on 10, right when you get through this.
Okay. So what I was going to discuss on this slide is talking about our general fund revenues and the major categories. I also want to highlight the areas that right now it's within the council's authority to influence revenue in order to generate more resources to solve any type of projected structural budget gap. So for local sales and excise tax, that does make up our largest revenue category at 40%. State shared revenue is 37% of our general fund revenues. That is not an area that the council can look to influence. That is set by state law. Primary property taxes make up about 12% of our revenue. We already maximized primary property tax levy. We're also limited by the state constitution for a 2% levy limit over the prior year plus new construction. User fees and other make up about 11%. This is generated from the departments for the activities they charge directly to residents who use their service, but primarily it's our ambulance billing from the fire department. Those rates are set by State Department Health Services and driven by transports. Also, this category includes interest earnings, which is not something that the council can influence. Councilwoman Pastor, did you have a question?
Yeah, my question is the local sales and excise tax. Could you please explain that to me?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So local sales and excise taxes is made up of our transaction privilege tax and use taxes primarily. It's sales tax.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So for 2526, our general fund revenue estimates by major category, this provides the estimate for next year dollar value, as well as the year-over-year growth rates. For local sales and excise taxes, it's estimated to be $724 million next fiscal year, growth of just 0.7%. That growth is somewhat muted because of the elimination of residential rental, a full-year impact next fiscal year. Our state shared revenues are estimated at $682 million, negative growth year-over-year of 1.2%. This is primarily due to the state's decision to lower that individual income tax rate to the flat tax. Primary property taxes estimated to be $224 million, positive growth 4.1% year-over-year. It is growing because it increases in assessed value. The primary property tax rate is actually lower today than it was in fiscal 17 by 7 cents. So the rate's not increasing. Assessed values are going up. User fees and other estimated to be $193 million. It's negative growth of 1.3% estimated next year. That's primarily due, we do anticipate interest earnings. As interest rates come down, we won't earn the same high level of interest in that revenue category. So overall, our total general fund revenue estimate for next fiscal year is $1,823 million, basically flat growth at 0.2%. I wanted to provide some historical information about our year-over-year growth rates in our general fund to demonstrate, going back to fiscal 17, our revenues have grown, particularly during the pandemic. We saw a big increase. We had a lot of consumers shifting their buying from things we don't tax to things that we do, as well as a lot of federal stimulus that was doled out into the economy that helped the consumer. So you see in fiscal 2324 on the chart, year-over-year growth last year of 12.6%. Unfortunately, negative growth anticipated in the current year of negative 4.5%. I've had to lower our budgeted revenue because the first six months of this fiscal year, we are starting to see revenue slow. I lowered that growth from negative 3.2% to negative 4.5%. Again, next fiscal year, basically flat revenue growth at 0.2. I want to spend a minute talking about our state shared income tax revenues. This is allocated 100% to our general fund. It's based on collections from two years prior. We do rely on the state Joint Legislative Budget Committee to do these estimates. We don't collect an income tax. They have the data. We rely on them for the outer-year forecasts. Senate Bill 1828, as we've said, lowered the individual income tax rate. This was a progressive four-tax bracket structure, lowering it down to 2.5% effective in 2022, signed by former Governor Ducey. And the GLBC in a recent report, and I quote, "Collections dropped for the state $2.7 billion between fiscal '22 and fiscal '24," as the 2.5% rate was implemented. This bar chart shows actual collections for state shared income tax to the city. Last fiscal year, you see collections were $436 million. We're going to be seeing a significant drop. We know this amount again, based on collections from two years prior. 19% year-over-year decline in fiscal '2425, down to $351 million. Fiscal 20, I'm sorry, fiscal '2526, another decline, 7% to $328 million. Before, we are anticipating that this revenue stream would start to increase. Again, this does not take into account any type of legislative action that would further try to reduce individual or corporate income tax rates. Residential rental sales tax estimated loss on this screen, this should look familiar. I've been providing this information to the council for some time. This shows anticipated impacts, not just to our general fund, but to our voter-approved special revenue funds. The estimated impact to our general fund in the current year, again, this is a partial year impact. It was effective in January. $19.3 million to our general fund, all funds $37 million in the current year. Next fiscal year, the first-year annual impact, $47.4 million loss in revenue to our general fund, $90.7 million to all funds. As we move through the forecast horizon through fiscal '28, we're going to, we expect to see a reduction of over $320 million loss in revenue to the city as a result of that one legislative action. So general fund expenditures, some of the major assumptions we've included in our baseline model. It is based on employee compensation on current council-adopted contracts and estimated costs for the class and comp study that the council approved. Fiscal year '2526 and beyond are subject to future labor negotiations. The class and comp and negotiated labor increases, why, a necessary investment for our employees. They are significant over a period of three fiscal years, from fiscal '25 to fiscal '27, based on a snapshot. It's roughly $590 million increase just to the general fund. Those increases also impact all city funds. All other operating expenses in our general fund are based on our historical growth, as well as CPI inflation. Other assumptions for our expenditures, we estimate pensions separately, as I'll show momentarily, because it places an extreme burden on the general fund to meet those commitments. We use information from the actuaries for both public safety and our civilian cooper system to do those estimations. We do have amounts built into the forecast for pay-as-you-go. This is cash outlay to the general fund for things like major facility maintenance, as well as IT investments. We are assuming the use of an excise tax proceed, a strategy, to relieve some upfront cash burden from the general fund. This spreads out the cost of significant capital investments that have long useful lives over a number of years. Majority of these excise tax proceeds would be used for public safety, specifically fire. We also are growing our contingency fund or our rainy day fund. It's growing, but remains at 4.75% of operating expenditures. We are trying to get it to the council's goal of 5%. We're just not there yet, particularly because we're anticipating a budget shortfall. We're not growing that percent to 5% in the forecast period. So I wanted to spend a minute just showing inflation. I know that everyone is aware inflation has been a burden, both to businesses, governments, and residents alike. But going back to 2015, you can see inflation. This is according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. For Phoenix, Mesa-Scottsdale was as low as 0.2% in 2015, really peaked in 2022 at 11.5%. Inflation moderating, coming down. Again, we have increased costs, however, the prior year, particularly since the pandemic. We don't have deflation. So as of 2024, it was estimated at 2.2%. General fund expenditure growth is similar to inflation. This chart shows going back to fiscal '19, the city of Phoenix's expenditure growth in the general fund, peaking in '2324 at 13.6%. Is starting to come down, estimated at 5.8 in the current year and 6.3% next fiscal year. So pension, this chart should look familiar. The green bars represent the civilian cooper system pension costs. The red bars represent the fire pension expense, and blue bars represent police. This demonstrates going back to fiscal year '20. The commitment from the general fund for pension was $300 million during that time. It is now growing through the forecast period over $500 million by the time we get to fiscal '28, representing 25% of our operating expenditures, a $63 million increase from fiscal '25 to fiscal '28. So this brings me to our 2526 preliminary general fund budget status and the baseline forecast. I want to walk through briefly, remind council that last year, at this time, I presented that forecast, and we had an anticipated $80 million one-time surplus that the council wisely chose unanimously to set that aside upon our city manager's recommendation because we knew we had a structural budget problem last year. '26, it was estimated we could have deficits ranging anywhere from $103 million to $66 million, and in fiscal '27, a deficit of $53 million to a potential surplus of $19 million. But a baseline forecast last year was presented, $92 million deficit in '26 and another $31 million deficit in '27. So now that I've estimated our resources for next year at $2,388 million and our estimated expenditures at $2,744 million, we have an updated status for 2526 reflecting a deficit of $36 million. Again, this does account for the $80 million that council chose last year to set aside. We have to make sure our ongoing resources equal our ongoing expenditures. If not, we'll continue to have structural imbalances. My team is underway working with departments to do a seven-plus-five technical review on all expenditures and revenues. So these estimates may change. If we do make adjustments to the general fund status, I will bring those back to the council March 18th with the trial budget. So for the general fund baseline multi-year forecast, I build in the updated status, as you can see, that $36 million deficit reflected. We then use a pessimistic and optimistic range on resources and expenditures. The further I get out in the forecast horizon, the less certain we become of our estimates. So we always use a range. You can see projected deficits anywhere from $102 million to $64 million in '2627. Another deficit potentially $41 million to a potential surplus of $29 million in fiscal '28. Baseline forecast, $36 million next year, another deficit of $83 million in '27, and another deficit of $6 million in fiscal '28. Some of the things that council should take into consideration as you move forward with budget decisions, we know that we have to provide additional resources to our fire department in order to bring down response times. We also know the American Rescue Plan Act dollars are expiring, that have been strategically used to help with our unsheltered population, but to also address the impact of homelessness on our neighborhoods. It's estimated that $5 million is going to be needed next fiscal year and $26 million ongoing to continue the good work that our Office of Homeless Solutions has been doing. We also need to ensure that we're keeping pace with salary and benefits for our employees. We need to ensure the class and comp study that the council approved does not fall behind, that we have capacity in the budget going forward to provide for future labor negotiations. This is so that we can remain market competitive and attract and retain a quality workforce. Other budget considerations, voters thankfully approve the 2023 general obligation bond program. Comes with a lot of exciting projects that'll be coming online in the next few years, like fire stations, parks, libraries, regional pools, splash pads, street improvements. However, with the general obligation bond program, also comes increased operating costs. We have factored those estimates into the general fund forecast, but we want to ensure going forward that the city council has capacity, or the budget has capacity, to do future geopond programs as we move ahead. We know, as I mentioned, general fund revenues are slowing, so I've had to lower those revenue projections. There's always a risk that revenues could continue to slow, and I would have to update estimates next fiscal year as well, that would put additional pressure on fiscal '2627 and out-years. And last, but certainly not least, our community, our residents, they don't want less service. As I've been saying, they don't want inferior service. They want more and exceptional service, and we have to have the resources in the budget in order to meet those expectations. So now that I've presented not such good news about our budget outlook, we do want to propose some strategies for the council to consider so that you can ensure we balance the budget going forward. But before I do that, I wanted to demonstrate the significant growth that the city of Phoenix has experienced since 198081. As you can see, over that period of time, 40-plus years, our population has more than doubled. We are now almost at 1.7 million residents. We are the fifth-largest city in the country and growing. Our area or square miles that we have to service is now at 520 miles. That's an expansive geographic area that we have to provide service to. Our total street miles are at almost 5,000 that need repair and maintenance. Our number of building inspections is almost at 300,000 per year. The number of parks and libraries we have has grown, requiring increased operating costs. Our calls for service for emergency services for police and fire have significantly increased over that time. While our total city employees today is at roughly 16,000, we're still 1,000 lower than we were just before the Great Recession, and our per-population one of 1,000 is actually lower today than it was in 1980 at 5.6. Our per-capita or per-resident general fund operating expenditures on an inflation-adjusted basis are only slightly higher today at 1,106 per resident. And interestingly, our per-capita general fund sales tax per resident is actually lower today than it was in 198081 at $410 per resident. So council, as you know, on January 15th, we did post the required notice for a potential transaction privilege tax and use tax rate increase. That notice is available on the city's main website, as well as at phoenix.gov/budget. It is posting notice that the council may consider on March 18th, increasing that rate from 2.23% up to 2.8% effective July 1st. This would help to offset the ongoing revenue loss from state actions. It would also provide the necessary resources for additions to the budget, as I've discussed, for fire and homelessness, but also ensure we have capacity going forward to protect our current levels of service to our residents. I did also want to take a minute, I was asked about this, and I think it's important for the council to understand there are certain things that the state restricts you from being able to tax, such as the luxury tax. This is per Arizona Revised Statute 42-3002. That includes taxing things such as liquor, tobacco, cigarettes. The transaction privilege tax, per ARS 42-6004, were prevented from taxing sports events sponsored by nonprofit organizations, things like sales of warranty and service contracts and internet access, were prevented from taxing natural gas and LPG, as well as internet-based audio and video services, and just recently, by state-action residential rentals. Also, were prohibited by Arizona Constitution, Article 9, Section 25, from taxing services. These are things like childcare, financial and legal services, doctor and medical visits, home repair, hair and salon services, and cleaning and landscaping, just to name a few. As well as, there's being considered to go to the voters in November 2026 to eliminate the option for cities and towns to do a food tax. The city of Phoenix does not currently have a food tax. We're among a handful of cities that don't. Many cities and towns in Arizona, however, they do, and they rely on that revenue stream to provide their programs and services. If this were to pass by the voters, this would be another category of revenue that future council could not consider as an option to balance the budget. I now want to provide a history of our TPT or Transaction Privilege Tax and Use Tax Rate, a history. a history. Our city manager did indicate that for the general fund, 1.2% is the current rate that is allocated to our general fund. It's been this since 1986. So while the TPT rate has increased over this period of time, most recent approved increase by voters in January of 2016, it's been for specific purposes. The general fund has not shared in those increases, current rate being 2.3%. Those rate increases have been specific for transportation, public safety, and parks and preserves. I also wanted to provide, how does the city of Phoenix compare to our surrounding cities for our base rate in our largest category, which is retail? So as you can see on the bar chart, the city of Phoenix at 2.3% is lower than six surrounding cities. If the council were to elect to increase that rate to 2.8, we would be on par with the city of Surprise and just below Glendale and Buckeye. This chart also provides to the council and to residents, what does that mean if the city council were to increase the TPT and use tax rate from 2.3 to 2.8 on a taxable transaction valued at $10, $100, or $1,000? The incremental dollar increase on that transaction would be 5 cents, 50 cents, or So now, the proposed multi-year forecast with strategies include assumes a TPT increase of 2.8% effective July 1st. Use of the excise tax proceed strategy, specifically those proceeds, this would be coming to council by the way on April 9th for consideration, would help to build two additional fire stations as well as purchase additional medical response units, additional apparatus to strategically place around the city where the highest call volumes are, all with the goal of lowering response time. It also does assume that we would be setting aside in fiscal 26 and fiscal 27, 92 and 34 million respectively. This is to allow us to grow into those expenditures, make sure we're not spending all of that revenue all upfront, similar to what the council did in the current budget. Also, our city manager committed to not only increasing revenue to solve a budget shortfall, but to evaluate the current budget, work with city departments, reprioritize our spending, and come up with reductions totaling 24 million. More information about those cuts will be included in the packet for the trial budget on March 18th. But I can tell you, it does not propose to eliminate any filled positions, roughly 18.2 vacant positions. It's mostly in non-personal services for a variety of contractuals, commodities, minor capital outlay, very limited impact to service delivery. 2526 trial budget supplementals, you're going to see the request for additions to the budget. We know we need them for the fire department. 32 positions right now sworn personnel that are funded by a safer grant that is expiring. Those positions will have to move to the general fund, so we're not lowering fires' hiring target. That would not help us achieve reducing response times. Estimated impact next year is 3 million. Ongoing impact is 5 million to the general fund. Also, for the geopond program, Phoenix Fire Station 15 at 43rd and Camelback, it's going to open. We need to pre-hire and get the sworn personnel through the academy and ready to operate that station. Estimated impact next year to the budget is 2 million, but ongoing, it's a 4 million commitment increase for the fire department for that station. For our Office of Homeless Solutions for homelessness, as I mentioned, the ARPA funds are expiring. It's estimated by that office that they're going to need an additional $5 million next fiscal year, but 26 million ongoing investment commitment going forward out of the general fund, starting in fiscal 2627. The proposed strategy with the TPT increase would also provide net new $25 million to the fire department. This again, in an effort to reduce response times, this would provide over 100 additional sworn personnel, a handful of civilian positions. Again, more details will be included with our trial budget on March 18th. So with this proposed strategy, what would this do to the preliminary budget status for next fiscal year as well as to the outlook for the forecast period? It would take the deficit of 36 million estimated for next year to a surplus of 19 million. It would also put a surplus for 2627 ranging anywhere from 29 million to 68 million, potential deficit in 2728 of 37 million to a potential surplus of 37 million. With a baseline forecast for next year of 19 million, a potential baseline forecast of 49 million in 2627, and a potential balanced budget in 2728. The amount for 2627 is made up of both one-time and ongoing expenditures. It also assumes that that 19 million estimated for next fiscal year would be one-time funds. So next steps in terms of budget adoption, March 18th, we'll come back with the trial budget. Council is going to be on the agenda to take action on a potential TPT and use tax rate increase at that meeting. In April, we'll do what we always do. We take the budget out to the community. We want to hear from the residents. We're going to be holding 12 budget hearings from April 1st to April 16th. And then in May, on May 6th, we'll present the city manager's budget, and the council will make budget decisions on May 20th. That's a very critical date, as I've told the council in the past. Without that, we cannot do our legal budget process, which is on June 4th, scheduled for tentative budget adoption, June 18th for final budget adoption, and then we wrap up the process on July 2nd with property tax levy adoption. And that concludes my presentation, and we can answer any questions.
Thank you, council members. Councilwoman Galindo Alvira, followed by Councilwoman Gordado.
Amber, thanks for your very comprehensive presentation. I know from the very beginning of this process, you said that you would be telling us a story and revealing the ins and outs of the budget and the peaks and valleys, and you've told tonight a very important story for us to consider in terms of what is coming and what the forecast looks like. One of the areas that I am particularly happy about is the use of the dollars to support our fire department. Sorry, I'm going through all the pages. Particularly with the filling of those 32 positions that would have the safer grant expiring, and of course, the fire station number 15, which will be in my colleague's District 5. And what's important about that is that that station is not just a fire station. It is one that has built in and forethought of the health and well-being of our firefighters to protect them and cancer prevention. So that's an important caveat for this, that it's not just another building. It's one that is safer and better for our firefighters. I also applaud the fact that you've included in there homelessness for the Office of Homeless Solutions. We know that is an ongoing issue. It is one that is complex, it is messy, and it is heartbreaking. And for all intents and purposes, it is the city of Phoenix who is taking this issue head-on and really taking the brunt of what's going on with other cities not stepping up to the plate in the way that we have done. I support the transaction privilege tax because it doesn't enrich our coffers. What it does is it maintains a level of service that we have promised to our residents and that it helps the city of Phoenix fill those gaps. And so I think that what you've done here is really answered all of my questions, not just tonight, but the ongoing briefings that you and Jeff have done with me. And those are my comments so far. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gordado.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a couple of questions. One, when will we see the list of the cuts, of the potential cuts?
Mayor, mayor members of the council, we will be presenting that as part of the city manager's trial budget on March 18th, so you'll receive those the week before that we present that.
Okay. I think like for me, that's critical for residents to be able to understand that. I think in the last five years, we've grown as a city, and I think we've grown our services. I think there's a lot of great programs that we've started in the last five years that are critical to making sure that we continue to support especially working-class families and give more support to our fire department and making sure that we continue to cut our response times. So I think it's important that as soon as we can get that, that be important for people to be able to see what is it that we're looking at. And from what you said, we're trying to not impact services that we do for working-class communities?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Gordado, as someone who lived through the reductions of 2007, 2008, and understanding what that did not just to our employees, but also to our community, you have my commitment that what we're proposing to cut will not impact or impair services. We are really focusing on trying to control and minimize growth in departments. So that's why you'll see this list will be heavy on contractual and commodity spending. We also did a very deep dive, and we're extremely aggressive on our vacancy savings. So that's why you don't really have a lot of vacancies left for us to cut that actually reduced the footprint of the budget, because we're already aggressively counting the vacancy savings for many of our vacancies already.
Great. And I know that we've talked a lot about the class and comp study. And I remember when I first came onto council in 2019, one of the biggest conversations we talked about was turnover, and turnover, and turnover, and turnover. How much have we reduced that since we did the class and comp study?
I'll let Amber kind of go into the details on that, but what I will tell you is the actions that the council took as a body from a class and comp perspective and making sure that we're adequately compensating our residents, it's had a very significant impact on our vacancy rate. So Amber, you want to talk about where we are today versus where we were?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Gordado, mayor members of the council. So as it stands right now, we have just about a little over 600 general fund vacancies. It brings us to about a vacancy rate of 11.7%. That's down from about 17%. So I can tell you, the class and comp study, the negotiated labor increases along with, and I have to mention, the efforts by human resources under Director David Matthews have been significant. We've done a really great job in hiring people faster and offering them a higher wage. I just want to mention with that, it's very important because it does present a significant cost, not just to the general fund, but to all funds. So that TPT increase is providing not only to continue the class and comp and to provide for future labor negotiations, but to make sure that we don't fall behind in that structure. It's very important that we have that capacity going forward. So thank you for that question.
Great. Thank you for that answer. And then also, how much of our ARPA dollars did we use to maybe subsidize our budget?
Mayor, members of the council, if you recall, we received from the federal government roughly $396 million. And you have been very aggressive in terms of spending that money. We've been doing ever since the last, over the last two years, we've been doing reallocations of unspent money. We did our last reallocation last year, and so all of those funds are estimated to be spent by the end of next fiscal year.
And how much is that?
We had, if I remember off the top of my head, we had a little over $100 million left, but all of that fund, all those funds are committed to ongoing programs and services.
And once that money goes away, what's our deficit?
So that money, again, as you will see in the presentation that Amber did, as well as the trial budget, many of the things that the council did with that money were one-time in nature, with the exception of the ongoing expense of the Office of Homeless Solutions, as well as, you know, adding those additional beds for our unsheltered population. And that's the $25 million number that we've now perpetuated as part of a supplemental request for the council for next fiscal year.
Great. Well, I just want to thank you guys so much for all of your hard work and trying to keep us in a good place. I mean, you know, the bond program was great. I think being able to get that passed, and I think it passed with a lot of our community leaders saying, yes, we need more bonds. And we had a lot of people that said that they need more. And I understand that in order for us to continue to do more and for us to be able to continue the services and continue to provide everything that our residents want, this tax increase is crucial to be able to pass in order for us to continue to flourish. I take a lot of pride to say that the city of Phoenix does a lot more for residents than a lot of the other cities. I know that for me, the issue with homelessness is a huge issue for me and my district, and it's very disheartening to see a lot of the neighboring cities do nothing. And I know that for us, it's important not to see what other cities are doing, but what is it that we can do to continue to thrive? So thank you guys for continuing to listening to us and all of our requests and everything that we need to try to continue, make sure that this continues, the city continues to move forward. So I, you know, in the future, will be supportive of this. So thank you so much, Amber. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, team. Thank you guys for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hodge, Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank the Budget and Research Department for all of your hard work in developing this forecast. While no one wants to see a deficit, having a clear picture of our financial standing does allow us to make informed decisions of our, for our city's future. So thank you for all the hard work in this. I have a few questions I would like to make sure that we clarify on the record, some for the edification of our listeners as well. I want to go to Slide 35 where you talk about the TPT increases that have happened The TPT rate history, Slide 35. You made a, you explained very clearly that we have not increased our TPT since 1986, the actual, it goes to the general fund. Can you explain to our listeners what, if any, authority the city council has or the budget department has to take funds that are above that 1.2% and allocate them somewhere else? Because I think the answer is we have none, but...
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, mayor members of the council. So the general fund rate of 1.2%, as I stated, has been the same since 1986. Since that time, it's increased to the current 2.3%. But each time it increased, it was taken to the voters, not that it's required to. It's within the city council's authority to increase the TPT rate. Those council members at that time elected to take it to the voters, but it was for a restricted certain purpose. So when it increased, for example, in 1993, it was for public safety to 1.3. Each year, you can see on the table, increasing to the current 2.3% in 2016 for transportation. So voters specifically approved those increases for those purposes. But prior to that, the general fund was the only TPT rate at the 1.2%. So each time it's increased, the general fund amount has remained the same at 1.2 of the 2.3.
Correct. And what I hear you say is that these were voter-directed priorities as to where the difference above the 2.2. I don't do that in public, so I'll do it anyway. 1.1% has been allocated by our voters as to where, which line items these need to go to, correct?
Yes, councilwoman, that's correct.
And I think we are, we should at least respect our voters' wishes, if not required to respect our voters' wishes in those allocations, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I also wanted to go to Slide 31 because I thought this was a very impressive number. And I don't know how many people understand the per-capita of spending for our sales tax. To say that we are spending for each individual $410 in 2024, 2025 versus 420 in 2029 in 1980 and 1981 shows that the city of Phoenix runs an efficient ship. We are not, I'll let you opine on it.
Mayor, members of the council, I think to give you kudos and the councils that come before you, I think what this speaks to is the council's ability to be very strategic and nimble with dwindling resource, but while you're also expanding services to a rapidly growing city. So I think the kudos here goes a lot to mayor and council for doing the best that they could with the money they had available, and this metric illustrates that very clearly.
That was my takeaway as well. I think the metric was very, and I didn't want us to gloss over that effect. I also wanted to stress the fact that the reason that we are here in this situation is not because of any actions that have been necessarily taken by this, by us as a city council or our city staff. It is primarily due to, I call, a trifecta of circumstances. It is what we have seen with state action, what we have seen with inflation, and what we have seen as an increase for demand of the quality services that we provide. So while no one likes to talk about potentially increase in our taxes, we have to recognize where we stand. I'm going to also be, I'm going to be a Debbie Downer for a second. What happens if we are, if we do not make the decision to increase our TPT? And I know Amber absolutely hates when I ask this question, but I do it anyways.
You want me to take it?
You go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, mayor members of the council. So if the council were to elect to not increase revenue to solve the budget shortfall, then you would really be looking at reducing programs and service or cutting our costs. I don't want to simplify it, but that's it. I mean, either we increase our resources to solve a budget shortfall or we decrease our expenses. So we would be looking at more ongoing budget reductions than what's been proposed by our city manager of that 24 million. We would have to be coming to the council with a bigger list of cuts essentially to balance the budget.
And when we talk about balance, I know we talk about, you mentioned it in terms of programs, but I also want us to consider it, it's not just programs, it's the personnel here at the city that execute those programs would be on the, ideally would be part of our reduction plan, correct?
Yes, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, mayor members of the council, that's correct. As Jeff indicated before, we have pushed our vacancy savings to a point that I really can't take vacant positions to solve a structural budget issue. So if we were to look to go to further cuts, we're really at So if we were to look to go to further cuts, we're really at that point looking at filled positions. And then we're looking at real impacts to service delivery. These are things that would cross multiple departments, including public safety potentially, and our non-public safety departments.
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate all of the effort that went into identifying the funding gaps and identifying potential solutions for us. And I look forward to working with my colleagues and you to ensure that whatever path we take prioritizes our residents', our residents' needs. I am truly, response time is something that we hear tremendously a lot about. And I appreciate that fact that that was incorporated into the, into the forecast. One more question for clarification. The forecast as presented provides for the full as proposed 2.8% TPT, correct?
Yes, Councilwoman, Mayor members of the council, that's correct. It is a recommendation to do the 2.8, so the full 0.5% TPT increase. That's to protect our current level of programs and services and provide the capacity to add additional resources for fire and homelessness, but also in the years to come to accommodate things like another geo bond program, labor increases, things like that.
Thank you. The geo bond, as you know, we passed on a, I think it was 75 to 60% when you consider all of the geo bond questions that were presented to our voters. I think that shows to us that our voters do prioritize and appreciate the services that we do provide as a city. So thank you for this comprehensive document, forecast. And I look forward to seeing the next proposal that identifies our residents' needs. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Stark and then Councilwoman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I think that Councilwoman Hodge-Washington said it so well. This budget is not really our doing. This comes from a tax or rental tax that we relied on heavily, 90 million. And now we have to pivot, and I think the most important thing we do is provide public safety to our residents. And so I will be supportive going onward to make sure that we continue to do what we need to do, and that is to provide public safety. I was a city employee when we went through the Great Recession, and I remember all the sacrifices that city staff made to make sure that we could continue to provide good services. I remember employees taking days off without pay, sacrificing some benefits. And so I'd hate to see us go back to that. And so I want to move forward and make sure that we have a balanced budget, but one that's responsive to our constituents, but also supports our staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, like Councilwoman Stark, I was a city employee during 2007, and the city employees made those sacrifices. And it was a tough time for everyone. And I'm, and as Councilwoman Hodge-Washington and Councilwoman Stark both said, this isn't of our doing. We get that. And the question I have, but first, before I get to my question, it might be more of a statement. Amber, I want to thank you and your staff because when I, when you guys break me, when you bring me up to speed on these things, you really helped me to understand it in its totality. So I am really grateful for that. It means a great deal. It helps this process. And as I talk to my constituents, they understand it and to cut to the chase, they are supportive of, the folks I have talked to are supportive of an increase, a tax increase. So that having been said, I want us to go back just a little ways and ask this question. The 2007 public safety tax, if I remember correctly, and I truly agreed with it then, 80% of it went to the police department, 20% of it went to the fire department. I felt now, I look at it, and I think it was a little short sighted. It should have been a little bit more even, and we're paying for that now with the fire department and the long response times and such. So the question I have, and it's more, I think, of a philosophical thing, and I don't, you know, just so you can opine on it just briefly if you want, but is this enough? And if, if it's not, why not more? And, you know, obviously, I'm talking to tax increase. Do we have the system in place to sustain it? And I think that would be the question, but, but thank you.
Mayor members of the council, I'll start with the answer to that question. I think going back to 2007, which was the Proposition 1 tax that you're referencing, that fund added 400 police officers and 100 firefighters. When that fund was added, in my opinion, having had to be the person balancing that fund when it went through the deficit that it did, that fund was never adequately forecasted to sustain the number of positions that were added to that, to those, to those voter initiatives. And so for a long time, the general fund has actually been subsidizing those funds. But you're right, it was, it was imbalanced in terms of the ads for police versus fire. Even when it was added, police still had several hundred vacancies and fire obviously never has any because everybody wants to be a firefighter. You know, when you, when you talk about your, your second part of your question of, is this enough? I guess if you were to ask our fire union, they would say enough is never enough because there's always going to be a demand for new or more firefighters to help with response times. I think what we are limited by is the resources that we have at our disposal. And when you look at what we've presented to you today, I think we're trying to, again, do this in a methodical fashion, which is what we've been doing and what you have been doing as a council. You've got a bond program that is going to add four fire stations over the next five to seven years. You've also got with the proposal that Amber and I are talking about, picking up another two fire stations in this excise tax. You've got Station 74 in Owatuki that will also be added, you know, in the near future. And then we're also, you know, working on some other items. So I think right now with what we're proposing, it will have a dramatic impact on response times. I think the initial impact that you'll see, the most dramatic impact will be firstly in the first due area where those fire stations are being added. And then as you build out, you get additional response time increases or decreases as that state, as those stations and the apparatus that we're adding start to overall response times decrease.
Okay, and thank you for that. It's great clarification. But what I also want to add, we had a tragedy in District 6 a couple of weeks ago, a fire death over in the Arcadia area. And as I understand it, and this is why we need to add, obviously, to the fire services, we need to reduce response times. And as I understand it, the closest fire station was out on another call. And their response time probably would have been probably less, five minutes or less, from what I understand, the proximity to the, to the location of the fire and the tragedy. But it was another station that was rolling from a further distance, and we had a tragedy there. And I'm not saying it's because of that. But it is very clear that we have to look as far ahead as we possibly can, do as much as we possibly can to ensure that fire service is adequately staffed. We have the, the equipment in the right locations. And in my subcommittee and the Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee, we hear about it with regularity about the response time. And, and it's a Herculean task on the part of the fire department. They're doing everything they can. But I, if there's any way possible for us to do more, I am all in favor of that. And obviously, it would have to take further discussion on the part of the mayor and my colleagues. But I just wanted to bring that issue up and thank you guys again. The information you provide, the insight, the, just everything that you do is very, it's better than it ever has been before. For those of us who have been around for a while, know that we took shortcuts thinking it wouldn't catch up to us. Well, guess what? It's caught up to us. So with that, Mayor, thank you for the time. Jeff, Amber, everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you. We will go to Councilwoman O'Brien and then public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jeff and Amber and Kathleen and all the staff that have been working on the budgets. I'm going to go back to your comment just now, Jeff, about the additional stations that we're going to be getting. Does this budget include the staffing for those stations now, or will that budget be coming? Will those numbers be added in future budgets?
Councilwoman O'Brien, Mayor members of the council, good question. And I think it's, I have to kind of preface this with, it's all included. But what I want to say is, what we presented today is adding two additional fire stations using excise tax bonds. That would be Station in, District 1 and District 2. And the ongoing operating expense of those two stations is approximately $10 million for the staff that would staff it. Additionally, we're talking about adding about $40 million worth of apparatus to the fire department over the next two years, using, using those excise tax proceeds. They're also adding additional response units and apparatus to drive down response times, which would be like roving units that would go to areas of greatest need. And they're also looking to add additional apparatus to stations that can handle additional apparatus, while at the same time using those to drive down response times. What Amber is also forecasting in her multi-year forecast, though, are the ongoing O&M costs associated with those on, these upcoming bond-funded fire stations that voters approved as well.
So, but I want to understand the apparatus and those costs are coming out of the excise tax.
The actual, yes, the actual capital expenses come out of the excise. You cannot pay, you can't use excise taxes to pay ongoing O&M for people. And so if you add it all up, when you look at what fire would be getting out of what we're talking about proposing in the trial budget, fire is getting the $9 million, which are, which includes the money to transition the 32 staffer positions to the general fund. Also the staff that's needed for Station 15. An ongoing operating expense for $25 million worth of additional staff, which is roughly 130 positions. And then they're getting roughly 76% or 114 million of the 150 million excise bond that we'll be bringing back to you in April. That ongoing O&M to service that debt is roughly $9 million a year. So if you were to add all of that up, fire is getting roughly $43 million, which is almost equivalent to 2/10 of a percent of a sales tax.
And there are those $43 million, they're going to be ongoing, those are ongoing?
That is ongoing expense.
Not from the excise?
The $9 million of the excise tax is on, is the portion that would drop off in the future, but that's not until after that debt is completely paid off.
Okay. And, and as Councilwoman Robinson talked about, we, and as did Councilwoman Hodge-Washington, we talk a lot about response times for fire. And I know you said they would, this would decrease them. Has the fire department run the numbers to look at how this would be decreased? And do we know those numbers?
Yes. Again, I'll bring fire up to the table in case they need to clarify anything that I say, because I'm only pretending to be a firefighter right now.
Well, that can be fun. A little bit different.
The actual, from what I understand, the emergency medical service response times, this is kind of broken down into Phase 1, Phase 2, because you're not going to add all of this at once. You know, this will come on over time.
Yep.
Phase 1 EMS response time, as of, based on 2024 data, before we add anything, is roughly 8 minutes and 36 seconds. Once we add what we're talking about adding in Phase 1, that response time drops to 4 minutes and 31 seconds. The actual, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, certificate of necessity, which is our AMBO response, currently based on 2024 data, is 10 minutes and 44 seconds. In Phase 1, that would drop to 4 minutes and 51 seconds. And then when you get to Phase 2 and add the additional, those response times drop again. It's not as significant, but it goes from 8:30 to 4:25 for the EMS and 10:42 to 4:44 for the AMBO. And so those, that is the first due. We're still working on trying to clarify what that looks like system-wide impact. But that is basically cutting those response times almost in half.
Okay. Thank, Chief? Did you have, did you want to add anything?
Jeff pretty much covered all of it. He knows us very well. Thank you.
Okay. And then I just want to clarify that these, these numbers are based on, off of our 2024 response times. How does it incorporate like the growth, right? In, in District 1, we're looking at, and I realize it'll be over time also, but in five to 10 years, we could have 16,000 new doors or the equivalent of half of Flagstaff up in my district. So how does that impact it?
And Councilwoman O'Brien, I'll answer first, and then I'll turn it over to the Chief and Chief Christ. You also have to remember that for District 1 in particular, there are two additional fire stations that are also coming online with the bond program, Station 70 and Station 51. So some of that growth will be mitigated by those additional stations coming online, but as well as some of these additional apparatus that we're talking about adding. And Chief Christ and Chief Duran, I don't know what else you'd like to add to that.
That's exactly correct. So Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman O'Brien, or Vice Mayor, excuse me. Yes, we are looking at, again, growth, call volume, response times is what we look at in totality there. Obviously, for that area that you're talking about, there's, as City Manager Jeff Bard mentioned, there's not only about three stations that we're looking at just specifically to that area, because we know that the demand for call volume with those units and current fire stations right now, you're seeing about call volumes running about 5,000 calls at Station 33, which is on Cactus and I-17, Fire Station 42 at Greenway, where you know this very well. And so those stations are very busy. So these will definitely have an impact, not only just on the response times and the availability of those resources to be in service, because it's a high call volume area itself. So that is, we do look at a 20-year forecast for fire stations across the city of Phoenix right now. Again, looking at growth, looking at call volume, looking at response times and other factors that we look at, geographics as well, to determine one of those locations. And that is a very fluid process. Chief Christ is our, being the person who's looking at our strategic planning of those stations. And the team is looking at that constantly for us right now. And that could change within one to two years, just depending upon where we see growth happening in call volume. Again, we talked about certificate of need and our response times for ambulances. That is always something that we look at on a monthly basis to make sure that we are, because we are regulated by Department of Health Services, we have to maintain that response time as well.
Okay. And I appreciate all of that information. And I just want to, I don't know if it's possible to have the numbers or if you will have the evaluation done for what it will have, what kind of impact it will have on the system as a, as a whole. Certainly, those numbers relative to District 1 and District 2, as my neighbor, I would love to see those individualized as we get them in PSJ. So we have made great strides since I first came on council for the fire department. I just want to make sure we continue on that positive forward motion. And I thank you all for all the work that's happening in there. I have a couple of more other questions not related to fire, so thank you very much. The, I want to go reference back to a slide that Councilwoman Hodge-Washington was on, 31. I think the other important statistic from there that we want to highlight is that we are, the number of employees per 1,000 people population is a third less than it was in 1980 and 81. So to say that we are doing more with less, that really says it all, and we're doing it fairly well, I think. So I wanted to make sure we highlighted that. Councilwoman Stark brought up, having gone through the Great Recession, and I, I'm going to ask, what, what did the council do then during the Great Recession to help balance its budget?
So Mayor members of the council, Amber, chirp in if your memory is better than mine. At that time, we had roughly a $270-plus million deficit. At that time, we did a combination of things. We cut, we, we made some significant cuts. As employees, we also took compensation cuts and we did furlough days. It took three to four years to get those compensation cuts back to employees. On top of that, this council elected to institute a temporary food tax. That, so it was, it was a combination of an approach to balance the budget in those years.
So those councils had some flexibility with what they were able to do and used, as I'm going, as a saying I often use, multiple tools in the toolbox to help achieve that balanced budget, because, right? And I want to again highlight the legislation that, you know, while we don't have a food tax now, I know that our neighboring cities do, but the legislature is again removing a tool out of, or looks like they will be removing a tool out of the toolbox for cities and towns to work on their budgets. I'm going to also echo something else that was said earlier, and when some of my residents got to hear from Amber last month, one of their questions was, is this enough? If we're going to do it, is it enough? And to make sure that we are not cutting services. I want to talk about our vacancies, right? Because we talked, we did the class and comp, we've increased pay. And you said, was it about 17 or 18% was our vacancy rate before?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor members of the council, right. So before class and comp, the vacancy rate was hovering right around 17%. Since we've done class and comp and done the labor negotiated increases, that vacancy rates come down to about 11.7% for civilians. So it's clearly making an impact overall, I think, to our hiring and to allowing employees to retain and stay with the city.
And I don't know who might want to address this, but what does that do for the efficiency and savings to the city when our vacancy rate is reduced?
Vice Mayor, Mayor members of the council, it fills positions, which is a good thing because we want to make sure we can deliver programs and services to the community by having our positions filled. But I'll just go back over kind of the vacancy savings topic. And Jeff kind of touched on this, but what we've tried to do in the last few years in the budget is we've accounted for that savings in the adopted budget. We work with departments every year at our technical review process. We program an amount of vacancy savings into their direct operating budgets to reflect the fact that they're not going to have all of their positions filled all throughout the year. So we want to properly project expenses as accurately as we can. So we build that vacancy savings in. I also have been putting into the budget a vacancy savings amount in a non-departmental fund essentially, to account for the fact that we achieve a higher level of vacancy savings than what our departments program. Because of class and comp, because of labor negotiated increases and the good work, as I mentioned, of our human resources department to try to advertise and market the city as an employer. as I mentioned, of our human resources department to try to advertise and market the city as an employer, that absorption rates worked, our net vacancies, we're making progress in filling positions. So almost to a point where I've told Jeff, I'm a little nervous, because if I have to reduce that vacancy savings plug, that increases expenses. So we've done a great job. We're lowering the vacancy rates. I don't think it's quite to the, to the amount that David, our HR director, would like, but it certainly accounted for the savings, we're making progress, and it's very important that we keep up with that in terms of our class and comp and our, and our pay structure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You also talked about our state shared income tax revenue, and you try to project out what that will be. Currently, there is a bill at the legislature that would reduce the state income tax from 2.5% to 2%. I see a lot of heads shaking, nodding yes, so I am not misinformed about that. Does your production for fiscal year '27 or fiscal year '28 take into account another half of a percent loss in, because it will impact our state shared revenue, correct?
That's correct, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the question. No, I don't put into the model proposed legislation. We account for in the model actual law. So if the legislature were to, and the governor were to sign it, to further lower either individual income tax rates, which is a bill that was submitted going from 2.5% to 2%, or corporate income tax rates, taking those from 5.5%, I think, to 2%, that would have a significant impact on state shared income tax revenues and the millions of dollars and the out years, because, again, it's based on two years prior. I think right now, and I don't want to speak for our government relations director, but those particular, those two bills don't appear to be moving, but it doesn't mean a future legislative session, or they couldn't come back. So it's something we watch very closely, but I'm not building into the forecast any assumed impact from that directly, because it's not law.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And we just want to make sure we all know what's potentially on the horizon. And in another presentation, Amber, you talked about this potential, the TPT increase in terms of how it would, when you came to visit my community, how it would impact the average person. And I think that it's important to share that if a family of four were to go out, the increase would be less than a quarter. If you drank coffee, I don't, but I guess if I drank tea, maybe my tea would only go up about a penny. I'm not sure, though, where you get a cup of coffee for $2.15. So maybe it'll go up a few more pennies. But that is important in showing how this might affect the average day, the average person. And so, again, I can't thank you all enough for all the hard work you've done to dig us out of a hole that is not of our own creating. And so, again, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll have more council comments and questions after a public comment. We'll begin with Mari, followed by Jason.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mari Yapes, and I'm a lead organizer with Unite Here Local 11, which represents thousands of workers across Arizona in hotels, airports, university campuses, and event venues. I'm also a single mother of two small children, and I live in District Four. I am here today to speak in favor of the proposed city tax increase. My son Sebastian is five years old and is part of a city-sponsored soccer team that he loves. It's an opportunity for him to socialize with his peers, to get his energy out, and learn discipline and teamwork. And as a single income, it truly is one way I can afford for him to participate in quality team sports at this age. It is only possible because of the public city service at the Phoenix, that Phoenix provides with parks and wrecks. As an organizer with Unite Here Local 11, I can share that many of our members also use Phoenix services. Right now, our industries are very busy due to spring training and the city, and aren't able to share their own testimony, but I will. Yolanda Hernandez is hotel laundry attendant, and she was able to keep her home during the pandemic when most hotel workers were suspended because of the Phoenix mortgage assistance. Dozens of airport workers have peace of mind that their children are safe and taken care of while, while they work, thanks to the Phoenix Airport Daycare Program. These services enable hard-working Phoenix residents to stay housed, leave, leave, lead full lives, and have access to affordable, quality daycare. Please vote yes on the proposed city tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason is next, followed by Andrea.
Mayor, council, nice to be here. Thank you for having us. I'm the president of Local 2384. I represent blue collar employees in the city of Phoenix. Today, I stand before you to express our union's strong support for increasing tax revenue through the TPT, particularly in light of the loss of, of revenue from the state and, and potential more loss. I also work in the water department for the city of Phoenix, and we ensure that, that clean, drinkable, safe water comes to every tap in the city of Phoenix. And that's something that I'm pretty proud of, so I've been with the city for almost 10 years. Phoenix's workforce is the foundation of our city's success for maintaining safe streets, clean water, and ensuring public safety and the integrity of our infrastructure. However, with such significant revenue losses, the city is now facing difficult choices that will directly impact city services, employee wages, and critical job stability. If we fail to secure additional revenue, we risk employee layoffs, service reductions, leading to longer response times for residents. And it's not good. Wage stagnation, making it harder to recruit, recruit and retain skilled workers, which we already have a hard time doing in today's, in today's job market. Deferring maintenance and infrastructure will lead to failures in that infrastructure. Increasing long-term costs will harm in quality of life for our residents. On the other hand, increasing tax revenue, we can provide improved city jobs, ensuring that our employees can continue delivering essential services. I didn't think it was going to be two minutes. City employees are not just workers. We are taxpayers, homeowners, and community members who deeply care about Phoenix's future. We urge you to scout to take decisive action to ensure our city has the resources necessary to support its workforce, sustain critical services, and to protect the well-being of all communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea is next, followed by Timothy.
Mayor and council, my name is Andrea Ramirez. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. As a resident of Phoenix, a teacher, a mom, and an active member of my neighborhood association, I want to express my growing concern regarding the city's need to balance its budget. I fear that many vital programs that our community has come to rely upon may be among the first to face cuts if we do not advocate for them. Specifically, I want to emphasize the importance of the Phoenix PAC After School Program. This program is not just beneficial, it is essential for many families in our community. It provides crucial support that allows parents like me to work while ensuring our children are safe and engaged. I urge you to consider maintaining or even expanding this invaluable program. I am in favor of tax increase. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Timothy is next, followed by Teresa.
Mayor and council, my name is Tim Jenkins. I'm a resident of the city of Phoenix and a member of the Camelback Community Neighborhood Association. I came on here because I'm compelled to express my concern regarding the budget shortfalls being discussed today. My worry is that in times of financial constraint, community programs are often the first to be affected. I have seen firsthand how initiatives like the Gated Alley Program, the Speed Hump Program, and the Shade Tree Program has significantly contributed to creating safer neighborhoods for our community. The programs not only enhance our quality of life, but they foster a sense of security, well-being, and pride of community among residents. I urge you all to consider the impact of cutting these vital, small programs that could have on the safety of our neighborhood. It is crucial that we continue investing in these initiatives, not only because they are necessary, but because they are working effectively to improve our community. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
Thank you for your testimony. Teresa is next, followed by Elizabeth.
Mayor and council, I want to thank you for having these meetings online, and I hope people are watching. Thank you, budget team. A year ago, I didn't understand how much you juggled, but getting educated, I see the light. I agree, we need an increase in taxes to recover what our legislatures have done. I see what the legislatures are proposing and waiting, feeling like they're playing dominoes with the people. People need fire stations, equipment, to help larger populations. Less is not better if consequences are less than funding is like to affect more of our emergency times. People are being evicted from their homes. Maricopa County, 87,197 evictions. Homeless Solution Department needs more city money since state and now the federal government is removing some of that money. And I ask the legislators watching to remember that people need services. Instead of reducing flat tax and thinking of corporations, think about the people. Look at the whole picture of your actions. It isn't just common sense. It's important to do the math. Thank you, city council, and I'll end with this. You put the people first as our police officers and our firemen. They are out there for us, and we need to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth is next, followed by Rebecca.
Thank you for having me, Mayor, City Council members. I am Elizabeth Aguilar, a resident of my community, which is Maryvale, for 30 years. I want to express the compassion I have for my community. I'm also a police assistant, city of Phoenix, and always looking up resources to help others. I joined community programs, I feed the homeless, participated in raising money for the less fortunate, always helping when needed in our community. Our community needs programs such as the Alley Gates, which I started in our neighborhood to feel safe. Please focus on the families that are struggling with inflation when you deliberate and approaching to balance the city budget. Let's not go backwards, let's go forward. Let's get, let's continue where we started. What I always say, you start, you finish. Let's continue this journey and continue our progress, projects, and funding. Let's not stop enhancing our community and continue striving for the best outcome. We deserve this. I have lived in Maryvale over 30 years, I've walked the parks, ride my bikes, and see what areas can be structured for a safe environment. I enjoy bike riding and excited for the canalscape. Now the construction of Sweeney Park and Oso Park. Please consider the impact the loss of these programs can do to our families, children, and lifestyles. Thank you, and also thank you for the explanation of the general funding. I'm voting yes for the increase to protect our, our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca will be our final speaker.
Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Rebecca Jenkins. As a resident of the city of Phoenix and a member of Camelback Community Neighborhood Association, I'd like to share my concerns regarding the budget deficit being discussed today. My concerns stem from the fact that when cities face financial constraints, community programs often bear the brunt of these cuts. The success we have experienced in creating safer neighborhoods in Phoenix could be jeopardized if the vital initiatives like the Gated Alley Program, the Speed Hump Program, and the Shade Program and others are being reduced or eliminated. These programs have not only been beneficial, but are essential in enhancing our community's safety and livability. I urge you to consider continuing these investments. They're not just necessary, they are effective and have made a tangible difference in our neighborhood. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak today.
Thank you so much. That concludes public comment. I will turn to City Manager for a question. At the federal level, the U.S. House of Representatives is looking at how to pay for extensions of the 2017 tax law, so they have to pay for it to offset it. And the Budget and Ways and Means Committee have put a repeal of municipal tax bonds, and indeed, this would also affect many categories beyond cities on the list of possible pay force. We use municipal bonds to expand the airport, to invest in water infrastructure, for the great general obligation bond investments that we've discussed several times today, including new fire stations. Can you talk a little bit about what that would mean for us?
Sure, Mayor. Great question. The, the impact of this, of the IRS or the fed, federal government taking away the tax-exempt status on municipal bonds or municipal debt would have a pretty catastrophic impact. I, I'll use an anecdote to kind of give you an example. So we, voters recently passed the $500 million GO bond program. We sold the first $250 million tranche of that. Some of that was taxable, some of it was tax exempt. If we took the portion that was tax exempt and be, made it taxable over the life of that debt, it would cost an additional $50 million.
That's really, I think, important for us to discuss, because there are budget numbers we have put out based on the fact that we will continue to be able to issue municipal tax-exempt bonds as we have been. And this would have a pretty catastrophic effect on our economy. It would also have a catastrophic effect nationally, in my opinion. The overwhelming majority of construction is done with tax-exempt bonds. So much of the progress we need to make would be slowed or stopped. We are behind as a country in investment in infrastructure. This is an important tool, and, and you wouldn't just see it in your city bills. You would see it in your SRP bill, and the central areas of the project would be impacted. It would be very difficult at all levels of government. So just really wanted to draw attention to that and to folks who are speaking with their federal delegation members, how vitally important it is that we be able to use tax-exempt financing to build more fire stations, et cetera. Appreciate the hard work on this and the community members who weighed in. We also, I just want to reflect, as we craft the budget, we understand our community is really pushing us on homelessness, and, and that's a priority for every single one of us up here. And so we're going to look for ways to move forward in, in that area. We know that that is such a tough challenge that we hear about regularly. And for me, as I look at where we might need to invest, excise tax bonds or more, it is still a topic that is still very much on my mind. Most of the costs we have right now that we need to add to the budget are operations and maintenance costs, but we are quite likely, particularly as we decide the city's plan to respond to a ballot proposition related to homelessness, going to also need to do some additional capital expenditures. We may also need to do some additional capital investments related to heat, which continues to be a really difficult and ongoing challenge for us. So never a dull day at the city of Phoenix. We got a lot of challenges. Amber did not go into the many bills at the legislature that would cut our revenue, but there are many. There's one we began to call pension unreform, because it would move backwards on pension reform. We already saw the very significant costs related to that item. And so, again, we are balancing a lot of challenges right now. I think Councilwoman Pastore had some questions?
I do. One of the items, we talk about state share income tax. Could you please just a brief, quick synopsis as what to happen in 2022 and why we're here today, and how much money we have lost?
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilwoman Pastore, Mayor members of the council. So in 2022, former Governor Ducey signed into law reducing the individual income tax rate from a four-tax bracket progressive system down to one flat tax of 2.5%. This essentially reduced revenues, not only to cities and towns that share an income tax, but also to the state. So it's significant to the city. The bar chart that I had shown in the presentation shows that we're going to have 19% year-over-year declines in the current year, an additional 7% decline next year. It totals basically $125 million over the two, two fiscal years. So it's significant in terms of its impact to the city of Phoenix, but also to, like I said, all cities and towns, just from lowering it from that four-tax bracket system to 2.5%. And as the mayor had mentioned, and I'm glad that she, she did, included in the council report is reference to several bills. We've estimated an impact based on when those were submitted, about $176 million to the city of Phoenix. I do want to say, some of those bills aren't moving, but we're tracking it very closely. But it is significant. There are certain members of the legislature that seem to want to continue to reduce revenues away to limit government.
And then could you talk about the residential rental tax?
Yes.
And how that now, or how it's been impacting us? We have $125 million, now we have how much?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Pastore, Mayor members of the council. So as I got into in the PowerPoint presentation, the ongoing annual impact to the general fund for next fiscal year, it's almost $50 million. It's 47.4, I believe, is the number. It's forty-seven point four, I believe is the number. To all funds, it's 90 million, including to our Public Safety Specialty Funds, Transportation 2050 and Parks and Preserves. So over that forecast period on that chart, it's about a $320 million loss to the City of Phoenix for all of our funds that received residential rental over that period of time.
Which what I also understand affects public safety.
Yes.
Like all these dollars are impacting our public safety. There's a huge impact on it.
Yes, thank you also for that question. Roughly sixty percent of the general fund goes to public safety, to police and fire. So when residential rental impacts the general fund, it impacts our ability to be able to fund public safety. It also impacted the Public Safety Specialty Funds as well for residential rental loss. Additionally, it's, it's all of the funds that are really taking the loss of the revenue. But the income tax, I did want to point out, that is 100% allocated to our general fund. But again, sixty percent of our general fund is made up of police and fire.
Thank you. Then what would we do if we didn't pass this and what would happen to the bonds? Would the bonds be implemented? And this is voter, the voters chose to pass the bond.
Yes, thank you for, also for that question, Councilwoman Pastore, Mayor members of the council. So the 2023 General Obligation Bond Program, the revenue that supports the actual projects comes from secondary property tax. So that's not impacted in terms of being able to move forward with that GO bond program. However, the operating costs for the GO bond program are funded by our general fund. We have built into the forecast the cost of the O and M, the operating and maintenance costs for those projects. But certainly, if we weren't to have additional revenue to replace what the state has done, the council will have difficult decisions to make to ensure we can make good on what the voters passed with that GO bond program, but at the same time adopting a sound, balanced budget each year and meeting all the other demands and expectations that the council has and our residents, quite frankly, are expecting the city to deliver.
So basically, we would have to figure out what project we would want to move forward to be able to pay for the operating funds.
Or you would have to find other areas of the budget to cut.
Cut, right.
Because you're very limited, as I discussed in the presentation, on what the council can do to increase revenue. We're not a business, we're a government, and you're restricted by state law on what you can do to increase revenue.
And then what I read in the, in the packet was that the last time we did an increase in the general fund was 1986. Am I correct or am I wrong?
Yes, Councilwoman Pastore, Mayor members of the council, the general fund TPT and use tax rate to the general fund has been 1.2% since 1986. The current rate is 2.3. The general fund gets the 1.2 of the 2.3. So the 1.2% has not increased since that time.
And then my, one close to my final thoughts and questions. On, I have a, well, on the slide, I have a 2025, 2026 trial budget supplements. And in there, it talks about thirty-two safer positions, the GO bond station 15, and then the homeless, OHS. Could you please explain, oh, well, let me, let me back up. My understanding are these are being funded, and I'm not sure if it's ARPA dollars that they're being funded by, or they're grants that they're being funded by. But either way, either one, grants or ARPA dollars, that funding will be disappearing and going away. So my understanding is now we will now place these items into the general fund or these positions.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Pastore, Mayor members of the council. So the 25, 26 supplementals, those are net new additions to the general fund that are being proposed. For the fire department, it's thirty-two sworn positions right now that are funded by a safer grant. That safer grant is expiring. It's running out. So we have to move the positions and the costs associated with those positions into the general fund. That's the five million roughly ongoing. For the GO bond fire station, Station 15, we have to start hiring the sworn personnel. That's a net new addition to the general fund budget. So that's an addition for the fire department to hire those additional sworn personnel. I believe it's twenty-four sworn positions that would be added to the general fund budget, a partial year next year and then ongoing. And then for the Office of Homeless Solutions, all of the work that OHS has been doing right now for the unsheltered and to limit impacts to neighborhoods, we have to move those costs because the ARPA funds are expiring. So to continue the work that they've been doing, we have to move roughly $5 million next fiscal year into the general fund, but then ongoing, starting in 26, 27, to continue the work that they're doing, they need roughly $26 million, which would be a future supplemental for 26, 27 to expand that.
Okay, and then I'm going to go to the next bullet because the slide's not up, but then it says provides 25 million ongoing to fire to reduce response times because we have been talking about response times. And then it says details will be included in the trial budget. Where's that 25 million coming from?
Yes, thank you. Good question. So Councilwoman, Mayor members of the council, that $25 million net new addition to the general fund budget would come from the increase of the TPT and use tax if council were to approve that rate increase on March 18th to 2.8%.
Okay. And could you play, explain to the audience excise tax? What is excise tax?
Excise taxes include our city sales tax, which is the transaction privilege tax and use taxes. It also includes our state shared sales tax, state shared income tax and state shared vehicle license taxes. Those are considered excise taxes.
Okay. What will we do with those taxes?
Those taxes, right now, state shared revenues are allocated 100% to the general fund and the city TPT and use tax is allocated to the general fund and to our voter approved special revenue funds primarily.
Okay. Well, I would like to thank everybody for working on this. This has been a on, ongoing conversation for quite some time. My final question is, I would like to know what legislation is going to hurt us. I know that.
It's a long list.
It is. But, but I think we need to be fair and frank for our constituents to know what type of legislation is going to hurt us in the future, which right now we're talking about today. But when this happens or when it's voted within the next couple of months, it will hurt us tomorrow that we really aren't planning for, or hoping. Some items have been, you know, taken or delayed or however, but I believe they will, there's a possibility for all of them to come back. And then that's where negotiations is. And so I think we need to talk about that. And I think we really need to talk about some legislation that is really kind of taking our tax away and tiring our hands. But I don't know who to direct that to.
Mayor members of council, Councilwoman Pastore, we, what we can do is we do send out as part of the, the informational packet on a regular basis, a list of legislation that, that our government relations team is working on, either trying to support or defeat. So what we can do as we, as we move forward throughout our budget process, we can incorporate, especially maybe in the March 18th trial budget presentation, it might behoove us to incorporate a portion of that and with, with our government relations team talking about some of those bills that Amber has referenced, that, that total right now about $176 million worth of impact to the City of Phoenix.
And I think it's important to incorporate that because I think it's important for public to understand what is happening. And sometimes I would say we, we stay silent on some of these bills because we're staying silent, but it impacts us. And as we have these conversations with our community, I think we need to be straightforward and they determine if they want to go advocate at the legislation or they determine if they want to elect those that are in office. And so I don't want to miss that conversation or have that conversation, and I would like to have it publicly too. Thank you.
Well said. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. The questions brought up two new thoughts for me, and I just wanted to clarify. One of the things I think the City of Phoenix has done pretty well over the, since I've been on council, for what that's worth, is the application and receipt of federal grants. With the current administration, I wonder if we have any, any guess or estimate as to how that may work or how that may affect some of the funding choices, that funding sources that we get, whether or not that CBDG funded or HUD funded or anything of that nature, does this budget take that into account?
Mayor members of council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, that is also an excellent question and is another risk that, that we have relative to our forecast and relative to trying to provide a continued level of service to our residents. We did a presentation a few weeks ago where we talked about some of the grants that we've been successful at, at acquiring, you know, Deputy City Manager Mario Panigua and, and Larry, they did a presentation a few weeks ago talking about, that's about $700 million worth of grants that they've received. On top of that, we know we have about $3 billion, that's with a B, dollars worth of grants that fund operating and capital across the entirety of our city. So there is huge exposure there. I, I think we learn daily, kind of with executive orders, what types of things are out there that could impact us. So at this point, we don't really know what would, what we, what we could be faced with, but we do have some pretty significant exposure.
And I think at this juncture, the forecast is proposed in based on what we already know thus far. Is that accurate or does that need to be built in?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then similarly, we saw a number of propositions that were passed in the '24 election here in Arizona, and I wondered if we've considered the budgetary impact of those propositions on the City of Phoenix. For example, some of the property tax, you know, refund and other expenses.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, Mayor members of the council. That would be Proposition 312. That's the public nuisance law. So that calls for that property taxpayers can apply to the Arizona Department of Revenue for a refund of their annual property taxes that they paid if they feel that a city or a town didn't fall through with their ordinances or their laws as it pertains to public nuisance. If it is found that the city failed to enforce laws or contribute to a public nuisance, then the taxpayer would receive the refund directly from Arizona Department of Revenue and the City of Phoenix would have its state shared sales taxes reduced by that amount. The difficult part with that, to answer your question first off, no. The forecast and the status for next year does not incorporate any type of an impact from Proposition 312. We don't have any information, data, historical data to reference to know what type of impact that will have. The City of Phoenix also has an opportunity to respond to the taxpayer, to try to rectify the issue, or can basically state that, that we're not in agreement. At that point, we could incur litigation expenses, so we simply just don't know what the impact of Prop 312 would be. I can tell you just from my perspective that not continuing the work for homelessness could put us at risk of losing some of our state shared sales tax revenue if we, we don't do something to be able to prevent individual taxpayers from stating we're not complying with our own laws and doing something that's, they feel is harming their, their economic or financial value of their property. And I, I don't know if our city attorney or city manager has anything additional to add, but that's from my perspective what that impact is.
Nope, I think you noted.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that as we continue to have more pressures on us from the legislature and, and providing, and providing more services there and at the same time taking away those resources that are needed to address the issue. So thank you for that clarification. And then my last question was in response to a question from my colleague, Councilwoman Robinson, asking, is there anything more that we can do or is the, are we limited to what is stated in the notice? Not that I'm saying we want to automatically go ahead, ahead of it, but I wanted to make sure there was some clarification on that.
Mayor members of the council, as it pertains to the sales tax notice, we are limited to what we posted it for, so we cannot exceed that. And so at this point in time, that, that's all we have at our disposal.
Okay. So if, for example, we do receive some more limitations, whether or not it's from the federal government or from another state, from a state, from the state agency or state legislature directed us, we would have to come back and begin this process anew to balance our budget, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you so much for that. And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. I think the councilwoman brings up a really important point. We are going through a period of what some are calling de-federalization. There are functions that the federal government used to take on, from housing to emergency management to head start, that they may be exiting. And so if we believe those functions are important, other levels of government will have to take them on. The City of Phoenix has hundreds of employees who are paid through federal grants, and so the impacts could be quite deep. Some of those are positions that we will need to continue if this council's current values move forward. And so we just really need to think about that. Some cities are setting aside a pot of money in their budgets to prepare for that de-federalization, and that's something we ought to consider. Councilman Belinda Oliva, bring us home.
Here we go. You know, one thing that I think that we need to just go back a little bit on, because before we ask our residents to pay more in taxes, we, we've got to do our part. And thank you for, I know that the information is forthcoming in terms of where those cuts are going to come from, and I believe you said 24 to 25 million. So that's good because we can say that we've, we've done our part in, in paring down where we need to. And the presentation tells us a story. We have to act, it's a matter of urgency, and we know the math. And so my hope is that all my council colleagues, when they come to vote on March 18th, that they'll join me in supporting the TPT rate increase because I'm going to be asking for a unanimous vote from this council, just like we do with last year's budget. I think we need to come together to solve this and I'm going to be asking for it. So I'm doing it tonight and I'll do it again then.
A good comment to end on. Thank you, Amber and your team. Thank you, Jeff, for this really important presentation. And thank you to our community members who have attended budget meetings, testified today and provided input in council meetings and coffees and out in the community. Our final agenda today will be the Wildland Urban Interface Fired Preparedness. This is a topic that we've gotten a lot of questions about lately, and we wanted to provide an update to our community on this very important topic. It's a big one for us to put into perspective the city's Wildland Urban Interface Fired Preparedness. We provide resident and visitors with more than 41,000 acres of desert parks and mountain preserves land. That is equivalent to 10% of the landmass of the entire state of Rhode Island, just in Phoenix's urban park system alone. We also know that we have state trust land and other land that is also part of that Wildland Urban Fire Interface. So I want to say thank you to our hardworking staff and volunteers who work year round on these issues, whether it be keeping invasive species at bay or investing in our water service distribution system. I will now turn it over to our Assistant City Manager to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We are here today to talk to you about a topic that has been on the minds of many since the tragic wildfires in Southern California. And we've had many conversations with many of you individually and with community members, and we are proud to present to you today some of the preparation and emergency preparedness that we have in place here in the City of Phoenix. So with that, I will start with Executive Assistant Chief Tim Kreis.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager, base, Mayor, members of council. Start off with what is a Wildland Urban Interface? The Wildland Urban Interface is where human development, structures, infrastructure, et cetera, encroaches and grows into the natural landscape. And wildfires are one of the most significant challenges, not just in the state of Arizona, but the southwestern United States and, and a lot of places around the globe. And Mayor Gago, you probably remember this, but the, you had had a meeting that you scheduled with the City of London, and we talked about heat response and we talked about the challenges that they were facing with Wildland Urban Interface fires and extreme heat in London. And at that meeting, we were able to share some of the things that we were doing as a fire department, learned some things from them. And for us as a department, that was a wonderful opportunity, but we do that all over the place. We meet with and work very closely with our local automatic aid partners, and I'll speak to that in some more detail in a minute. We work very closely with the State Department of Fire Enforcement folks. We collaborate with departments around the country, the U.S. Fire Administration, the list goes on for best practices in Wildland Urban Interface and firefighting. So going back to 2019, we had a significant community risk reduction effort to address Wildland Urban Interface. And the reason, if you're asking why in 2019, it was because I was on the fire department then and, and many folks who probably remember this, we got a lot of rain in 2018 and 2019, specifically in the fall and winter months. And that was great for the water department, great for the community, but it also resulted in significant vegetation growth. And when that vegetation growth grows and dries out in the, in the spring, the fire risk goes up. And for us in the valley, the type of fire that we deal with in our landscape, in our environment, when temperatures are above 105 and humidity is below 15% and even 10% even, the fire risk goes up significantly for us for Wildland Urban Interface fires. High winds make that even worse. And there's a cycle, which I'll speak to more in a minute, but I'm going to hit on just for a second here. but I'm going to hit on just for a second here. That Wildland Urban Interface time period for us, where we're usually at greatest risk, depending on weather and a lot of other factors, is in the springtime and before the monsoon season here in the valley. So before I go any farther into things, one of the questions that I want to answer for folks in the community who might be watching and to share with all of you, is the question of what should we, as community members, be doing as it relates to Wildland Urban Interface Preparedness and Preparedness across the board? And the first thing, and one of the most important things, is just be ready for it. And what I mean by being ready for it is maintaining a defensible space around your house. So cutting trees that are not healthy, if you've got trees that are right up next to your attic space and the gabled ends in your house and these sorts of things, trimming those back, maintaining your natural landscape, maintaining your property, will significantly reduce fire risk. And in the event that there is a fire, it makes the firefighter's jobs and chances of being successful a whole lot better. The next thing is being set. So what we're talking about there is planning your escape routes, talking to your family, where are you going to go, all those aspects in there. And the last one is go. In the event of an evacuation order, we have a significant fire. Director Lee will talk more about some of the big picture things there from emergency management perspective. But one of the earliest things that may happen is firefighters and police officers knocking on your door and telling you, hey, we got to go. So being ready to go is another important thing. As far as Wildland Urban Interface prevention, we work with a lot of folks on this, public and private, fuel reduction programs to remove vegetation and maintain the landscape. One that we're very proud of, and it's one example, but it's a good example, is a partnership at the Water Department with the Trace Rios Watershed Facility out in southwest Phoenix. We've done this twice. We did it last year in October, where we partnered with them on a controlled burn to manage that landscape, and that was a partnership between the Water Department, the Phoenix Fire Department, and the Arizona Department of Fire and Forestry Management. And any best practices that we have on Wildland Urban Interface Fire Prevention and best practices across the board, we share through our website, through social media, and other ways to connect to the community. This slide intends to just show that we, as a fire department, know where the Wildland Urban Interface exists in our community, and we know it because our firefighters work extremely hard on pre-incident planning. So this map is representative of those areas, and all of these areas are pre-programmed into our computer-aided dispatch system. Things that we look at when we came up with this map is fuel loads, defensible space, structures and topography, and of course, where the Wildland Urban Interface exists. As far as what do we do with that information, this is a program that was new back in 2019, where we're working on the community risk reduction plan for this across the board, is when weather conditions dictate, typically in the springtime and sometimes a little bit past our normal monsoon season, depending on what's happening with weather, is we activate our Wildland Urban Interface Deployment Program. So you're probably wondering what that is. What that is, is all of the areas that we've identified on that map previously, if somebody calls 911 and says there's a grass fire or a brush fire or wildfire, we're going to send five engines and multiple brush trucks and tenders and command officers on that initial response. Prior to that program being in place, our dispatchers would have likely sent an engine and a brush truck on those. The reason we're sending all those resources early is because we know the weather risk is up. We know where the risky, the areas are that exist in the Wildland Urban Interface, and sending a bunch of resources early and stopping the fire early is a whole lot better than having to send hundreds and deal with a fire that could be very destructive in our community. And then the last thing I wanted to hit on in this slide is, when we built the Wildland Urban Interface Program, all of our operating procedures for Wildland Urban Interface firefighting, all of the training, that was all done regionally in addition to being done in partnership with our state and federal fire agencies. So this photo here is the fire that happened on the evening, I believe January 25th, don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty darn sure it was January 25th. In any case, it was on South Mountain, and it was absolutely visible to residents in our community, and they were concerned about it. Our firefighters did a great job at controlling this fire and keeping it only to a few acres, so I'm very proud of that. But I want to show you this next one here, and this is a video, and why I'm showing you this is I just want to underscore how new technology is assisting our fire department with our efficiency. On the fire on the evening of South Mountain, we had air support with Firebird, giving us intelligence to the firefighters who were working. So the helicopter was up. The next day, we flew our drone, and the reason we did this, when I was a firefighter before the drone program, a very long time ago now, we would have to climb back up the mountain and walk around and make sure all those hotspots were out. It's called mop-up. That's what we'd have to do. With the drone, we were able to use this tool to assess the area, and we did it multiple times to make sure that fire was out as we would expect it to be. The drone has thermal capabilities, which you're not seeing in this video, because it's not impressive because the fire was out, but those thermal capabilities are excellent. Oops, sorry, I did that. Okay. And last one I want to hit on here is just our partnerships. So the Phoenix Fire Department works really closely with the Water Services Department, not just on Wildland Urban Interface incidents, but on pretty much every significant fire. As a captain, battalion chief, deputy chief, assistant chief of operations, and now in my role for the organization today, we work with the Water Department all the time. They respond to incidents, and we call them when we need them, and they do a great job for us. In addition to that, back in 2019, going back to our community risk reduction program, we built really strong partnerships with our state and our federal fire agencies. But I really want to talk about the Department of Fire and Forestry Management, the state fire folks. They do an amazing job for us. They help us with hand crews when we need that help, but they also provide us air support. And we've used that air support on a lot of incidents in the City of Phoenix, and we have a program to manage that and work with them and do the command procedures and manage these things when we have these incidents. Something that I was concerned about, and I'm still a little bit concerned about frankly, is air support is critical on these types of fires. And there may be a day when there's significant fires in northern Arizona, there's significant fires across the southwestern United States, and that air support might not be available for us. And those concerns caused me to reach out to our partners with the Phoenix Police Department to see if we could recruit their air unit in to do an air support and Bambi bucket operations. And they said yes without hesitation. So the photo that you're looking at on this slide is Phoenix Firebird helicopter with a firefighting Bambi bucket underneath it, helping us fight a fire. So they have that capability to help us do that, and that's a great thing for us. For our firefighters, training and equipment is a big part of this. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the cycle for our management, but our firefighters train on this stuff every year. We go through our equipment every year to make sure it's ready to go. And we have a Wildland Urban Interface Automatic Aid System Subcommittee that reports to the Operations Committee that built all of this stuff in partnership with our labor group. We also have a Wildland Urban Interface Subcommittee within the Phoenix Fire Department Labor Management So this video that you're looking at here is that air support coordinated by the Arizona Department of Fire and Forestry Management. This is a very large air tanker dropping firefighting materials down on a fire that we had in the City of Phoenix. So to sum up a couple of things here, so Wildland Urban Interface challenges will continue to evolve. Annual weather patterns are going to drive that for us. It's pretty dry out there right now. We've had a couple of brush fires already. The cycle for us on the Phoenix Fire Department is a perpetual cycle. So about this time of year and even before this, we're training up and getting our firefighters ready for the season. We're checking out our equipment and making sure our equipment's ready to go. When the temperatures and the humidity and springtime comes along and the fuels start to dry out, we'll activate our Wildland Urban Interface Deployment Package and some other resources within the Fire Department. We'll get through the season. When the season's done, we'll do after-action reports, and that cycle will continue forever. And with that, actually, there's one more, excuse me. And then, just sorry about that. For us, building on the program that we have is important, so continuing that. Building on our firefighter training capacity is important, and as discussed throughout this meeting, and we appreciate your continued support, is we do have some challenges with resources and response times now, and having a significant wildfire is going to stress our system and could have stresses for us there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Hayes with the Water Department.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor and council, fundamentally, all of the water that we need for drinking and for other uses comes from the production of our water treatment plants. As a reminder, we have owned and operate five water treatment plants. Three of those plants receive water from the Salt and Verde River Systems, the 24th Street Plant, which is over in the Biltmore area, the Deer Valley Water Treatment Plant over in the metro center area, the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, which is the state's largest water treatment plant, which is jointly owned with the City of Mesa, sits out in the City of Mesa. We also have two facilities that get its water from the Colorado River System through the Central Arizona Project. One is the Union Hills Water Treatment Plant, which is the state's first water treatment plant that treating Colorado River water, and then the Lake Pleasant Water Treatment Plant. Under normal operating conditions, water for a day is ordered the night before and adjusted on a daily basis to make up for the day's demands. Under emergency situation, additional water could be released and get into the system within six hours. Under these emergency situations, the water treatment productions could be expanded up to 610 million gallons a day. Just to kind of put in perspective of what that is, that production level is approximately 200 million gallons or 50% more than what we see on the hottest summer day of the demands. Also, to put that capacity into perspective, the large pallet fires, the warehouse fires that we've dealt with with the Fire Department, only use about 2 million gallons spread over a couple of day periods. So it's a lot of extra redundancy and resiliency in our treatment systems. After leaving the treatment plants, water enters the distribution system where it can be used. The 7,000 miles of pipeline of distributions spans in elevation change of about 1,200 feet from the rivers up to the north. Due to that elevation variation, the city is divided up into 13 major pressure zones to ensure standardized pressure targets throughout the city. Those pressure zones are served by various water supply systems, including water mains, storage tanks, pump stations, and pressure-reducing stations. The water demand, which includes the amount of water required for normal customer needs, potential fire uses, are key factors in how our systems are designed. The major water zones are designed with at least two ways of bringing water into those zones. That redundancy ensures reliable supply throughout the city. The 57 water storage reservoirs and tanks provide approximately 480 million gallons of storage throughout the city. That storage provides operational resiliency to meet peak hour demands, fire flow storage, or emergency reserves in case of things like water main breaks and other things that we see in our systems. For areas without storage tanks, the pump stations and pressure-reducing stations that are used to feed those zones are required to be larger in capacity, primarily to meet those fire flow conditions that we might see. And as Chief Kreis pointed out, under emergency situations, the Water Services Department coordinates with the fire by sending an operational specialist to sit in their incident command center to give them operational guidance, and essentially just how do you get more water into those zones and how they can switch to find the larger pipes and other things like that. And we've implemented this on the last larger fires that we've had, and I think it's worked well for both departments. In 2021, the Water Services conducted a comprehensive review of our fire hydrant program to ensure consistent and regular execution of preventative maintenance, inspection, testing, repair, and replacement of fire hydrants across our system. The primary goal of that system continues to be the diligent testing and maintenance of our 57,000 fire hydrants annually and ensuring compliance with our city's fire code. At this time, we currently have over 99% of our hydrants that are operational. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Lee.
Thank you, Director. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Emergency response to these complex, fast-moving incidents requires a well-coordinated and a strategic response under an all-hazards unified approach, with a primary focus on the following three areas: a planning and preparation, resource coordination and operational response, and communication. The City of Phoenix Office of Emergency Management maintains the city's emergency operations plans in accordance with Section 11-5 of the city's charter, and this is to ensure a continuous state of operational readiness and emergency response preparedness for the City of Phoenix. OEM works directly with public safety first responders, all affected city departments, county, state, and federal resources to coordinate an effective and efficient response to a Wildland Urban Interface incident. OEM works collaboratively with the affected city departments' public information officers, as well as the city's communications team, to ensure effective communication and unified messaging is provided both internally and externally to the public and city department staff, as well as city leadership during an emergency incident. OEM, in collaboration with Phoenix Fire Department, the Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management, are responsible for developing and maintaining the city's hazard mitigation plan, which is focused on planning and preparedness. The primary purpose of this plan is to identify natural hazards impacting Phoenix and assess the vulnerability and the risk posed by those community-wide hazards affecting both human and structural assets. The plan develops strategies for mitigation of identified hazards, reviews future maintenance procedures, and documents the planning process. The Office of Emergency Management routinely conducts and participates in tabletop and full-scale exercises designed to test procedures, response, and recovery states of readiness within the City of Phoenix and our regional, county, and state partner agencies. These tabletop and full-scale exercises cover multiple topics and scenarios spanning the entire emergency management spectrum. Recent examples include Phoenix OEM's participation with the Maricopa County Flood Control District, Cactus League baseball spring training for both regional and county-wide exercises, and various tabletop exercises with our aviation partners at Sky Harbor, including their recent triennial full-scale exercise, to name just a few. Phoenix OEM continues to remain prepared in identifying any future and training opportunities with the Fire Department and any of our regional partners on important topics, such as Wildland Urban Interface incidents. In response to an incident, the Office of Emergency Management would respond right along with police and fire departments to conduct assessment and coordinate resources with local, county, state, and federal agencies, along with our affected city departments and our public and private strategic partners, for example, APS, SRP, Southwest Gas, et cetera. During a Wildland Urban Interface incident, I would be responsible for activating the Emergency Operations Center, as well as activating a joint information center, and to make notifications also to the Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management of its activation. OEM works with public safety responders to develop a suitable traffic management plan, and this is to assist the public with egress from an affected area while ensuring that an effective route of ingress is maintained to support emergency first responders who are trying to access the impacted area to address the incident at hand. OEM will facilitate the coordination of city department resources and personnel for use during the incident to include facilitating evacuations, establishing shelter, and family reunification, family assistance centers as needed. The Office of Emergency Management will coordinate with Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management for the acquisition of additional resources from the county if and when all local resources have been exhausted. During a Wildland Urban Interface incident, the primary emergency support function is the Fire Department ESF4, who would take the lead on all messaging through their public information office. The Office of Emergency Management, along with Fire PIO and our city communications team, will work collaboratively with first responders to develop unified messaging to the public regarding evacuation instructions, routing, or shelter-in-place recommendations. The Office of Emergency Management coordinates with the city's communications team to provide special instruction to our affected City of Phoenix personnel via the Everbridge System and to provide city department staff with instructions for reporting assignments based on their respective emergency support function if they were to be activated. The Office of Emergency Management also coordinates directly with the Maricopa County Department of Emergency Management for the issuance of wireless emergency alerts, or WIA messaging, as needed to the affected population based on the conditions. OEM will coordinate with city leadership in the event of any kind of an emergency declaration, in the event that's issued, and OEM will continue to provide updates, share intelligence and information to the city manager throughout the duration of the incident to include mayor and council. This concludes our presentation at this time. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for a very important presentation, and we appreciate the collaboration across city departments, also an ask for our residents. Historically, 60% of wildfires that have burned in Arizona have been caused by humans. In 2023, it hit 71%, so we all have a role there. Comments? We'll go to Councilman Robinson and then County Councilman Glenda Ovira.
Mayor, thank you very much. It was a great presentation, as the mayor said, and I wanted to just make a comment more than anything else. Last Friday, we had the opportunity, Councilwoman Stark, myself, and County Board of Supervisor, Vice Chair Kate Brophy-McGee, the three of us hosted this presentation on a much grander scale to about 100 people. We had folks come as far away as Anthem, and we did it over the Devonshire Senior Center, where Chief Kreis and Commander Lee and a host of other folks from the county and other city departments presented on these types of issues, wildlife interface. And... other city departments presented on these types of issues, wildlife interface and, Wildland Interface rather, Wildland Urban Interface. Talked about that and both Brian and Tim talked about the things that kept them up at night. And the group collectively was really grateful for the information, the coordination. Chief Christ, you talked about the partnerships early on. It's clearly in place. Anybody who had an opportunity to be there and to listen to what all the groups had to say, the Office of Emergency Management from the county, as well as the city, the coordination is critical and you guys are doing it. So I wanted to say that publicly and wanted to thank you for that presentation last week and it was well-received to the point where folks want us to do it again in other parts of our council district and such, so more can come. So we'll be hitting you up for that. Mayor, thank you for the time.
No wonder they were so polished today. Councilman Galindo Oliva.
Thank you, Mayor. What happens in the instance if there's a total collapse of wireless communication to reach residents?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilman Galindo Oliva. There are built-in redundancies within our city's communications plan. It's a very robust and comprehensive plan that the city takes great pride in activating when something like this were to happen. We have multiple platforms that we can use. There is a heavy reliance on our communications team's ability to utilize social media messaging till we get real-time information. But I think one of the biggest takeaways, and one of the takeaways that we learned from the incidents in LA was a unified messaging component. And that has to be, that has to be in place so that we're sending the right information to the right people at the right time. And I think that was an area that we always seek to do, but we would make sure that that was in place for any messaging outwardly to the public. We do utilize the wireless emergency alert based on certain conditions. If it rises to that level where we can actually geofence a particular area, and then we can make sure that anybody driving in and out of that area gets that message in real time so that we can actually push that information to them so they can make better, more informed decisions. And then we, again, we will continue to partner with our fire department folks, the PD folks, as well as our folks here with media, to push information out over the media utilizing their abundant platforms that they have access to.
And then I just have one more question. The video that you played with the drop of the fire deterrent, the chemical that's used harmful to our firefighters? No? Okay. I need to ask. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to say thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. As council district eight, South Mountain Park is in that, is in that, my district. It's one of the questions sometimes we do hear, especially when there is a brush fire. So I want to say thank you. You guys have always been very expedient in the extinguishing of that fire and communicating that. I wanted to ask a couple of questions just regarding what was shared regarding the wildlife urban interface. Given what you've identified, the areas where we anticipate more of an increased risk of this type of activity, does the plan include any frequency of inspections just to ensure that we aren't, like, there's not any excessive brush in the area?
Yeah, the plan, excuse me, Mayor and members of council, the plan is really about our folks knowing the areas and pre-planning and then also sending resources out. Certainly, if our firefighters see an area that needs fuel reduction done, they'll communicate that to the right folks to see that that fuel reduction's done. We work with the Parks Department, Neighborhood Services Department, Streets Department, and actually even some state and federal when the land is owned by them. We work with a lot of folks on that.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second question on that issue, for example, like, and I'm using the historical data, what we've seen like in the LA fires and larger California fires, some of them were not necessarily, were maintenance issues based on utility providers. I'm not saying that is the situation we have right now at South Mountain, but I was curious as to whether or not there are any maintenance requirements that we do require for those that are occupying our, and maybe that's another question, not for you, Chief, but for someone else to answer for me. Okay.
So Mayor, Member of Council, we work with APS and SRP, the utility providers, really closely, Phoenix Fire Department, our regional partners, as well as the state fire folks. As far as inspections of their facilities, I did work with them on previous projects, not associated with the Wildland Urban Interface, but I found them to be pretty good about inspecting their stuff. And then as it relates to things like, you know, there may be times where fires are near the high-power lines and the carbon from the smoke can create a significant hazard for firefighters. So we coordinate with them very, very closely and carefully on firefighter safety and keeping the infrastructure going and what we need to protect and all those things.
Thank you. My question is for the next, my next question is for the birthday boy. One of the sources of frustration with the LA fires earlier this, earlier a few months ago, was the water pressure in some of the hydrants. Water pressure, I know you talked, water pressure, and I talked briefly about that, but I made some presumption that the pressurized zones, you know what? Let me, let you expand on the pressure, on the major pressure areas for us, please.
Right. And so, Mayor, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, so essentially, the reason that we talked about the pressure zones is to cause a standardized pressure throughout that zone, right? And so at the bottom of the zone, we'll have 100 PSI of pressure of water, and at the top, you'll see in the order of 40. And then, once you get to that level, then we switched into another zone. The reason that those are specifically targeted is under fire conditions that then drops the pressure with our models to around 20 PSI. And we think that's a safe yield, a safe pressure zone that fighter can utilize. I know that they boost off of that a lot of times and increase the pressure, but the systems are designed to establish that 20 PSI pressure to the fire hydrants at all times.
Thank you for that clarification because I think that's one of the concerns our community has, is to ensure that if we were faced with something of that level, we have some assurance that we have planned for it and we have those safeguards built in. So thank you. My other question was answered already by Councilwoman Galindo's question, so I will turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, real quick. So we talked about the South Mountain, I think it was in June, July. I was on a baseball field and all of a sudden, my phone started blowing up saying there's a fire in the South Mountain. And I said, "Really?" What ended up happening, I called the chief and I said, "Chief, I think there's a fire in South Mountain." He goes, "I don't think you're right, Lauren." And I go, "No, I think I'm right." He's like, "Okay, let me check." And then I called all my other fire guys and it was like, "Hey, can you check on this for me?" None of them at that time knew because residents from there were calling me and saying there was a fire. Then a few minutes later, 10 minutes later, I don't know the time, passed. And all of a sudden, I get a call and say, "Oh, you're right." And I said, "Yeah, and it's pretty, it's pretty bad because they're on, they're there and they're watching it and they're not," and then I'm like, "Okay, so what do you do in this situation?" So then, of course, they explained it. I also understood that they were going to allow it to burn, that they were, it was being monitored and it was going to be allowed to burn because it wasn't, I guess, that high of risk yet. And so, and then we talked about getting water and everything else. So I remember that very clearly, that day, and I appreciate what was happening because I was being informed at the moment in time. As we talked about fire hydrants, I really, on water pressure, I know a year ago, maybe two years ago, we were talking about our fire hydrants and getting our fire hydrants up to code or up to the level that needed to be. Where are we on that?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, so essentially what the council did is in 2022, there was a backlog of fire hydrants that we had. We got some contracted staff. Within a year, as the council directed, that backlog was eliminated and now we're maintaining and holding that number with our staff. The number is somewhere around 400 or 500 at all times. Every day, we assess fire hydrants and we find issues and every day, we're fixing them and correcting them and things like that. But that seems to be about that stable number, somewhere less than 1%, of our fire hydrant total is, cannot be used. One of the unique things about our systems and our working with the fire department is that information is related to, in GIS form, to the fire department, right? And so when they're coming up strategizing for a fire situation, they can see if there's potentially an apparatus that's out of service in that area and be able to strategize what they're going to do, knowing that information versus not knowing, rolling up and not knowing if it works or doesn't work.
So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank my colleagues also for being proactive. We manage our water, so that's one of the differences between the California fire. And we're very, we do our due diligence in making sure that everybody's safe and protected. So thank you.
Thank you. And to all those folks who emailed or called us when we were testing the fire hydrants to say we're wasting water, there was a reason, but we agree, we got to be very careful with our water. I think the state is doing some advanced detection technology so that Councilwoman Pastor doesn't have to call in fires and that we might have more automated detection of mountain park fires. So I think that is something I would be very supportive of. Councilman Galindo Oliva.
Councilwoman Keisha Hodge Washington inspired a question in me. What is the protocol should there be a disaster similar or like Los Angeles in terms of communicating with the mayor or in the mayor's absence, the vice mayor and the district council member?
Mayor, members of council, so it's going to depend on which is the first agency there. Typically, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that the fire department takes the lead responsibility for the fire response. Again, they won't be there by themselves. There would also be a law enforcement component for the other areas that I mentioned. Emergency management would be there. The fire department chain of command would be making those decisions as to what they need and who needs to know about what they're bringing in. I would defer that to Chief Christ for, you know, more information. But if the question is posed to me and I have to actually make some notifications, I would be doing so at the direction of the chain of command at the scene and we would make sure that all members of the city, the city manager, council, mayor, everybody were notified in a timely fashion. But again, it's not a decision that I would make in a vacuum and I think it would be something that, it would be kind of a coordinated effort with the units on scene led by fire.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate the presentation. We, I think all were getting lots of phone calls and questions during the LA fires, and so this is important. Chief Christ, you made a comment about our fire system and what this could do to it. Can you tell us how Phoenix works with its surrounding municipalities and what might happen in an emergency and a crisis?
Absolutely. Mayor Gallego, Vice Mayor O'Brien, members of council. The Phoenix Fire Department has the automatic aid system. And automatic aid is different than mutual aid agreements in many fire departments across the country because in those agreements, you have to ask, "Can you help us?" The automatic aid system is not built that way. The automatic aid system essentially makes all 30 municipalities that are participants in it, they function for the community like one giant fire department. And you probably wondered, "How do we do that?" Well, we do that because all of our firefighters go to the same regional training academies and they get taught the same stuff. We use the same standard operating procedures. We use the same communication platforms. There's only two dispatch systems and they're both, Phoenix is the larger ones. We dispatch for everybody. We share our resources and we respond the closest, most appropriate unit to the emergency, regardless of borders, and we work together.
And I think that's a very important piece for the metro Phoenix area and the residents of Phoenix, right? We are there for our surrounding cities as they are there for us. And being in the north part of the valley next to much desert, I appreciate all the fires that get fought along I-17 and those different areas. So thank you for the work that all of you do and for explaining this to us so our citizens can better understand how Phoenix is prepared for this type of emergency should it ever happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And when I introduced this item, I said I would turn to our Assistant City Manager, but we have two Assistant City Managers now. Inger Erickson will be serving as Assistant City Manager through December of 2025 and congratulations to Inger and we're very excited to have you. With that, we are adjourned.